Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Pelori.
I'm here.
Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Ms. Segal.
Here.
Ms. Skirby.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes, here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you.
And in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published. An electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted November 12th, 2021 at all schools on the district website at HTTPS backslash backslash WWW. Monroe dot K one two dot NJ dot US, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. All right. And we've had our statement. And the first thing we will do is welcome our counsel, Richard Bosch. He has, he is with the firm, Porzio. We have had our Mr. Gagliardi for most of the year, and Mr. Bosch has graciously joined us this evening. So, thank you, sir, for coming.
My pleasure.
Okay. We will be thanking, I see a lot of our staff members, and most of them are our principals and administrators. I would like to thank you very, very much for coming this evening, and you are all welcome, and we're happy to have you. So, thank you very much. And we will be welcoming Ms. Chanley, and we will be going into closed session after the meeting to formally discuss her contract. So, we'll welcome her officially.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
At that point. We will have, the next order of business is the approval of the minutes. Mr. Gorski, we have, the first one is the public board of education meeting on October 20th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, did you get that? I think it was Mr. Chiarella and Ms. Belko.
Yes, got it.
Any additions, corrections, removals? Anyone? Okay.
Ms. Bell, I have a comment. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting no to the minutes, simply because I think in our public forum section that it's editorialized significantly, and I think we have to do a better job of either having it verbatim or, you know, clearly representing what is being said during public forum.
You can vote no. Is there anything you'd like to add to it, or just you prove?
No, I just think that, you know, it's clear that some, some comments are, you know, elaborated on extensively, and some just are not, and it doesn't really reflect what the public is saying. I think everybody that speaks should be represented accordingly, and it shouldn't be depending on what your statement is.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I would like to add the same thing. I think especially Doug Poise's comments will not fully reflect to of what he said that evening. I think either we take the tact that was used in the past of either verbatim, writing what it is, or summarize everything. His comments were not captured adequately. I think some of them are omitted.
Well, actually, his was a lot longer than some other ones.
Ms., you need to be recognized, Ms.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you finished, Mr. Gorski?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, Ms.
And his is actually more in-depth than other comments that were made, that I think should have been.
Okay, well, we're not going to, you know.
No, that's fine, and that's, it needs to be representative of what is being said at public forum.
Absolutely.
Whether it's favorable or not, it needs to be represented in the minutes.
Perhaps we can take that to policy at some point and just make a recommendation there. Anyone else?
I thought it recently went back to policy to discuss how to properly do the minutes. Did that not go back to policy?
I don't think we've actually spoken about that, yet.
I think it should be, Madam President, I think it should be discussed, because I remember a month, a month and a half ago, a Republican candidate came and made verbatim. I think one of the board members here asked for that to be verbatim. If that's the case, Doug Poise should be verbatim as well, in my opinion.
Well, I take your point, but it wasn't that one person asked. It was, the board did approve those minutes at, at some point, so we're not gonna point out anybody.
They approved it because they don't want to make it at a contentious meeting, just like today, so.
Look, I, I think we should look, we've discussed software about having verbatim minutes. I think we should, you know, review that and see the cost attached to that.
I wanna call the question.
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Gorski.
This was an all in favor. Please raise your hand. All the noes, please raise your hand. Abstentions.
I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Recusals.
Does it pass?
I have four noes, and the rest are yays. So, that's six yays and four.
Well, no, I abstain.
Four noes, three noes, one abstention. So, I have six yays.
I raised my hand over there, I'm just getting my.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you take a roll call?
It's an all in favor motion, like we normally do, and I clearly see noes being Mr. Pelori, Ms. Bierman, and Ms. Skirby, and abstaining is Ms. Arminio. That's four out of 10, so that leaves six yays, motion passes.
Next one is the public minutes of the same meeting, I take it, right, Mr. Gorski?
October 20th, 21.
10-21, right, 21. Do I have a motion?
Can I correct your motion? It's the closed minutes, not the public ones. We just voted on the public ones.
Oh, okay. Again, I have them, okay, I have them not in order. The first ones, did I say public minutes? Okay, so then I, and the first one was closed session, I misread it. So, we're having the closed session minutes this evening now. Motion, sorry.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any corrections, additions, recusal, anything? No?
Seeing none, it passes.
Seeing none? Okay.
I abstained, Mike, I don't.
Mr. Pelori is noted as an abstention.
Yeah, were you, were you here at that time?
That's what I don't remember, that's why I'm abstaining, yeah.
So, you're, oh, so you were here for, well, that was for closed session.
You showed up for closed session.
I was here, okay, thank you.
But then the public one, you shouldn't have voted on.
No, I was there for that meeting. Yeah, I voted yes on it. Sorry for the confusion, I apologize.
Mr. Pelori, just to be clear, that's a yes on the closed session?
Correct.
And how do you vote on the public meeting?
No.
He has to abstain, right?
He wasn't here.
No, I vote no on it.
You vote no.
He was here, he was here.
Was he here? Okay, I'm sorry.
He was late, but here.
Got it, so noted.
It's the month.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, goodness. All right, so we are, in the next session, we are going into closed session for, be it resolved that the Board of Ed, it's probably mine. Sorry, I have it on because my husband had a procedure today, so in case there was an emergency, but I will shut it. Closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with, in accordance with the open, the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following. Discussion on the Acting Superintendent Schools Contract. I expect that there will be action taken. We should be perhaps a half hour, and following the closed section, action may be taken, which is expected, and the decision conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mister, okay, Mr. Pelori, and.
Seconded by?
Mr. Tofano.
Mr. Tofano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or recusals?
I recuse from participation.
Okay. All right, the rest of us will go into closed session. We are back from closed session. Thank you for your patience. I will read a resolution, and it will require a vote. Whereas the Board has determined to appoint Shari Chanley as acting superintendent while it conducts a search for permanent superintendent, and whereas the Acting Commissioner of Education granted the Board's request for Ms. Chanley to serve in the position of acting superintendent from November 10th, 2021 to February 10th, 2022, with the understanding that the Board may request an extension of that term if necessary, excuse me, as set forth in NJAC And whereas the Middlesex County Executive Superintendent of Schools has approved the contract with Mrs. Chanley, now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby approves the superintendent contract with Ms. Chanley commencing on November 10th through February 10th, with the understanding that if necessary, it may request an extension of that term as allowed by NJAC 6A:9B-13.1.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Chrissy Skirby, and seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky. May we have a vote, please, Mr.?
I thought it was Mr. Tofano.
It was.
No, oh, it was?
Yeah.
I apologize. Mr. Tofano.
Should the record reflect Mr. Nikotinsky, or?
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Okay, very well.
Okay. Any discussion, anything? Okay, may we have a vote, please? Seeing nobody. We're not, we're not, just have, just call the vote.
Okay. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
An advisory of counsel, I recuse based on a minor financial situation.
So noted. Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Pelori.
No.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Ms. Segal.
Abstaining.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam Board President and Ms. Chanley, congratulations, motion.
How many?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Can I have the floor for a second?
Well, we're gonna move on, what, what is it referenced to?
It's a reference to the contract.
A big, well, no, we should have done it before the vote.
I was advised by the council not to speak before the elect, the Board.
So, it's my, well, use the microphone, please, Ms., give him, yeah.
It appears there's been a misunderstanding when I spoke with Mr. Pelori. Beyond that, I can't say anything more in the public record. But at this point, there is no pending issue. In order to allow Mr. Pelori to speak now, you would need a motion.
I would need a motion to allow him to speak?
To allow him to speak. There's no pending matter.
Okay.
Madam President, if I may, knowing how the Board is gonna vote on this, I'm gonna reserve my comments.
Okay, yeah, you'll have an opportunity to speak, sir.
Yes.
Okay. So, the next order of business will be our student. Oh, let me, I'm sorry, let me say, congratulations, Ms. Chanley. I know you've worked very hard in our district for 17 years, and.
19.
19 now, okay. So, we will all recognize Ms. Chanley, and we would love to have our, our community, our district team work in collaboration for, in the best interest of our students, and I have, I believe that we will be doing that in a very robust way. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So, student board members, how are you tonight? Would you like to give us your reports, please?
My name's Siobhan Lotipoli, and I'd like to share my report. At Barclaybrook Elementary School, the social-emotional learning team has been working together to create an authentic SLE learning opportunities for our students. Recently, Barclaybrook students learned about the zones of regulations, which helped them to identify emotions and categorize them into four zones, with the goal being to help students independently regulate their emotions. When the students are in green zone, we are looking for them to demonstrate growth mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. Barclaybrook staff will look for and celebrate the great choices our students make throughout the year. At Brookside, they were excited to welcome students in their Halloween costumes at the end of October, and are grateful for our teachers and room parents for helping to coordinate classroom celebrations. The Barclaybrook Brookside PTA has been active this month. Their fall virtual schoolastic book fair concluded at the end of October, and their clothing drive and Thanksgiving pie sale culminated this weekend. At Apple Garden, some events are, being in a middle school, of a food drive for local families, and the donations are piling up. Their fourth grade teachers are preparing for their annual Thanksgiving carousel activity to celebrate Native American culture and the history surrounding the first Thanksgiving. The art tag program has begun this week. The fifth graders have the opportunity to design a contest-winning cover for the 2021-2022 yearbook. Some of the art classes have been creating cards for veterans, and we just concluded our Heavenly Hats fundraiser for childhood cancer. At Oak Tree, the one book, the one school, will take place on November 23rd. This is a program where Ms. Dinsmore reads the same story to the entire school throughout the day. The theme this year is a focus on SLE competencies. Staff will be participating in a holiday door decorating competition throughout the month of December. Our Falcon Leadership Program continues with monthly recognition of outstanding Oak Tree citizens in each grade. Their annual food drive is taking place, with each grade taking a course of a meal, and our gift drive will begin in December. And in terms of my, like, own feelings about high school and how it is going back from online to personal, like, in-person school, like I've said the past two months, I think the transition's been great. Honestly, I can't even remember that much of, like, when I was in online school. It's just become, like, so accustomed now that I'm in person, 'cause, like, it feels the same way it felt my freshman year, being in school, so, I mean, honestly, the teachers, the staff, everyone's doing a wonderful job, and everything is just flowing well, and it's really consistent, the daily-to-day schedule.
So, no one will be complaining about homework or anything? We're all happy to be there, right?
I mean, that's always gonna be a complaint.
No, no, no. We all are happy. Thank you very, thank you.
Hi, my name is Smara Jane, and this month at Mill Lake, third-grade student council has partnered with Woodland School to run a food drive to help families in Middlesex County. Overall, the staff and students at Mill Lake are doing amazing. The teachers and the SEL team at Mill Lake are ensuring that their students are being supported emotionally and socially as they acclimate back to a normal school day. They are also excited to restart their PALS program at Mill Lake, which ensures that they are promoting an inclusive school environment through creating partnerships and relationships with their self-contained students and general education students. At Woodland this month, the PTO during October sponsored a pumpkin patch for their students. The students wrote a summary of the book and described the character that they created using pumpkin. Mr. Dale, the student council advisor, held elections for the student council officers. The candidates running for the officer positions were instructed to record a campaign video on Flipgrid. The videos were shared with homeroom teachers to watch with their students, and the voting was held on November 3rd during lunches using iPads and Google Forms. At the high school this month, parent-teacher conferences have begun and are coming up right after Thanksgiving break. Winter sports have also begun, and all of the clubs are in full swing. Any, NHS, which is the National Honor Society, has begun after-school tutoring for anyone in the school district, all of the elementary schools, the middle school, anyone who needs it. The Math Honor Society has also begun tutoring during lunch in the commons for anyone who needs it during their lunch block. And at the middle school, the Unified Gym Class participated with High School Gym Class for a movie night. Students today signed a No Place for Hate pledge, and all students participated in Veterans Day activities during their social study classes. And, you know, this is the first marking period that just finished, it finished, I think, yesterday. I don't have any complaints either, you know, it's fantastic to be back, and, yeah, it honestly feels like COVID was kind of a blur at this point.
Let's hope it stays that way.
Yes, I hope it does stay that way, so, yes, no complaints from me.
And in terms of your classes and instructional and how people are catching up, how, how do the, you can both answer that, how do you feel about having, you know, actually moved forward with your instructions and everything? Are you happy?
I mean.
Quiet up.
It feels like, feels pretty normal, 'cause we were used to it, like, freshman year and the years before COVID, so honestly, the in-person learning felt, personally for me, it feels better than online learning, because having that interaction in person and actually being able to participate and seeing, like, faces in my class is just gonna help me, like, learn, and in terms of actually adjusting to, like, you know, like, moving on from, like, learning and, like, even throughout the next three marking periods, everything seems pretty fluent, and, like, I think learning, honestly, it's, it's gonna be normal, and nothing feels awkward.
Great, Smara.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I think the biggest thing is that I can actually tell the difference between my classwork and my homework now, which I think that just mentally helps a lot. You know, I'm sitting in the classroom, and I'm doing my classwork, and there's just this difference between my classwork and my homework finally, and I think that's helped so much. It doesn't feel so repetitive anymore, it just feels so different.
That's, that's wonderful insight, thank you very much. And I, on your behalf, I'm gonna thank all of our staff members, our principals and teachers that are here, that have brought us back up to par. So, we thank you all, and we hear that right from the students. So, thank you and congratulations, and thank you, guys. Okay, so, let's move to the presentations, that would be our next order of business. We have two presentations in this segment. The first one will be a presentation of the 2020-2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and then the next one, we will have a, the budget philosophy, sorry. After that, so, Mr. Gorski, shall we introduce?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Kimberly Kelly, CPA with the firm HFA. She is the senior manager on the Board's account. Welcome, Kimberly.
Today, we are going to present a draft of the audit report. Just to note, we've met with administration, we've also met with the finance committee, so tonight will be a quick summary of the audit report. The first thing I would like to stress is that this is a draft of the audit report. The reason why this is a draft of the audit report is because we're still waiting on the state of New Jersey to release GAFB 75, which is related to other post-employment benefits. The other post-employment benefits are, just a note in the back of your financial statements, they don't, they do not affect the numbers that the Board or the public or the finance office is really concerned about in the day-to-day operations or for budgeting, which is why we feel comfortable presenting this draft to you this evening. The first item that I would like to just discuss and go over with you is the Independent Auditor's Report. The Independent Auditor's Report is our opinion on the financial statements and whether or not they're materially misstated or not, in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles, as well as the government auditing standards and other requirements set forth by the state of New Jersey Department of Education. We are happy to say that we have, we have an unmodified opinion for the district. This is the best opinion that we can give the district in related to GAAP and the financial statements, and it's the best opinion that you'll, you'll see in the state. The second thing I would like to point out on here is that there was a new, there's an emphasis on matter paragraph in the Independent Audit Report. There was a new accounting principle that went into effect this year called GAFB 84. It, if you're looking at your financial statements comparing your June 30th, 2020 financial statements to your June 30th, 2021 financial statements, they'll present differently and appear differently with different schedules. However, none of those have a impact on the operation numbers that we're looking at. The second item that I'd like to go over with you is that we also have a report of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. We are required to review and evaluate internal controls, and we test internal controls for compliance with New Jersey state laws and regulations. We're happy to say that we did not notice any control deficiencies or compliance deficiencies in the report. The final item that we give an opinion on is our Independent Auditor's Report of compliance and internal controls over major programs. Anytime the district, or any district, or any entity receives government funds, federal funds over $750,000, or state funds over $750,000, they are required to have a single audit, which is us taking an extensive look into a particular program. Your state single audit was composed of the state aid public, which is your security aid and your special education aid. That requires us to look about 20 different compliance elements. We're happy to say we have no findings with any of those compliance elements. Your federal major programs this year, we did have three related, mostly due to COVID-19. The district received new monies that they have not received in the past, including the COVID relief funds and the ESER II funds. We looked at both those programs in detail. In addition, because there was, students were provided free lunch, there was increase in your child, in the child nutrition aid that's given to you by the federal government. This was another program that we had to audit this year. We're happy to say in respect with the federal and state programs, we have an unmodified, unmodified opinion, and that the school district complied in all material respects with compliance for the year ending June 30th, 2021. Very quickly to go over, this is just a summary of the financials for, that are on your B exhibits for your general fund. This is the main source of financials during the year. Just a cute, one key item that I would like to point out, in your other financing sources and uses, the district does budget for a $600,000 transfer from the Falcon Care into their general fund every year. This transfer was unable to be made this year due to the effects of COVID. However, overall, you stuck, the district still did have about a $3.6 million increase in their fund balance. The next item that I just wanna touch upon is the excess surplus calculation. There is one large change in the excess surplus calculation from the prior years. The state of New Jersey for the year ending June 30th, 2021, and the year ending June 30th, 2022, has changed the amount that the district is allowed to keep in their unassigned fund balance from 2% to 4% for the next two years. So, when looking at, looking at this comparatively, the district is allowed to keep more money in unassigned for the next two years. The amount that the district needs to, the amount that the district needs to put back into their budget in the 22-23 budget is about $4.4 million. This is just a summary of where fund balance sits at year end, the, at June 30th, 2021. Capital reserve has about $570,000. You have the $4.4 million that's reserved for your 22-23 budget, $5.1 million that is currently being used to balance your current year budget, your 21-22. There, the new account, which is Reserve for Unemployment Claims, this is one of the items that moved, that was affected by GAFB 84. It has about $400,000 in it. The district has $162,000 reserved for year-end encumbrances, and an unassigned fund balance of $5 million. Just to quickly touch upon your enterprise funds, as I had mentioned earlier, the district's Food Service Fund received a lot more state and federal aid this year than they have in previous years due to COVID-19. The district's fund change in net position was about $100,000, leaving the school district with an ending net position in their Food Service Fund of about $800,000. Taking a look at the Early Childhood Enrichment Program, this was affected by COVID-19 and the enrollment. You do have a deficit in net position in your Early Childhood Enrichment. It had, it's a deficit of about $16,000. Hopefully, with current year operations, the district should be able to repopulate that balance. The final fund that we wanna take a look at is Falcon Care. This fund was also affected by COVID. As I mentioned before, there was no $600,000 transfer out of the fund, like was planned. If the district was to transfer the full $600,000, this would have driven the fund into a deficit, and you cannot drive yourself into a deficit. In order to help with solvency in this fund, the administration decided not to do any transfer out of Falcon Care this year. And we would just like to thank you for your time and for your, you know, for hearing us out for this year's audit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, would you mind just sticking around just a minute in case any of the board members have. Kim, would you mind just sticking around just a minute in case any of the board members have some questions?
Of course.
Mr. Gorski, did you want to just mention anything?
Thank you, Mrs. Arminio. Just very briefly, certainly appreciate all the very professional services of HFA this year. It was a very well-done audit and that's on behalf of my staff. These are draft reports. We're going to post them to the website as soon as the board presumably accepts these tonight. And then I would encourage the public to take a look through. It has a different title than previous years because the acronym was something offensive. So it's now called a slightly different title. But please take a special emphasis to the Management Discussion and Analysis section of the budget. This is where administration can be a little bit creative and toot our own horn over what happened during the year and explain some of the figures in literal terms. It has a lot of pie charts. It shows you where the revenues come from and some of the financial highlights that occurred during the year. We had some that were noteworthy and worth taking a look at. And other than that, I just want to thank the Board of Education for all of your commitment to the internal controls in the district and thank the staff, who it's not just the business office staff. It's certainly the Curriculum Office. It's certainly the Facilities Office who handles an immense amount of contractor payments. And all of the schools, because all of the purchase orders and the budgeting processes that we have here, in my opinion, work really well. Everybody has a commitment to the taxpayers here and using money wisely, and this is the end result. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chiarella, do you have a motion to approve this?
I do, I do.
Then we'll open it up to discussion.
I wanted to thank you also. And before I make the motion, I just wanted to say that having an unmodified opinion without any negatives is a great thing. So, you know, it's commendable. You know, I'd like to commend Mr. Gorski and his team and the, you know, and the entire administration for everything that they do.
So, Mr. Bosch, I think we'll make the motion and then if any of the board members has a question for Kim, or shall we ask Kim now?
I would say it makes more sense to ask her now.
Okay, before we make the motion. Okay. Do any board members have a question? Mr. Polari?
Madam President, first, I want to congratulate our administration and the entire team that's here assembled. There's a lot of speculations about how this audit is going to be done. I want to congratulate each and every one of them for a successful completion. And also the Finance Committee that we have as a part of the board for doing a fantastic job of going through this. Very quick question. There was a lot of speculation about how much savings the COVID has resulted in because of the lack of use of the facilities. The fact that we stayed sovereign with the budget that was given, even though the Falcon Care was not an income that we have. Ms. Kelly, right?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. Do you have numbers on what that impact financially was on the district?
I'll say, what specifically? Like, there was savings throughout the district. I mean, off the top of my head, one of the largest lines I can point out to you is the savings that the district had on transportation. Flipping to that number, I believe it was over a million-dollar saving in that area. I mean, COVID doesn't also keep the district completely unscathed from loss in revenues as well as you saw with ECE and the Falcon Care. The district also had less miscellaneous revenues than anticipated due to non-rental facilities, but the savings and expenditures were able to more than make up for what you did not receive.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So it's almost nearly a wash, right, that with the savings and then some of the deficits? I mean...
Correct. I mean, you guys had a, overall, a good year for what it was. You guys were able to return $3.6 million back into your fund balance and to your surplus. You know, that's an awesome year for any district, especially with the circumstances that you guys were facing.
But that would not have been possible without the change in the law, correct? We would normally have only... No, I'm sorry.
The $3.6 million, that's purely just the your revenues over your expenditures, what was returned. The additional amount that's kept in your unassigned is due to the law, but that does not affect the overall total that you guys might have in your fund balance.
Anyone else?
I'd like to just say congratulations. I'm looking at the sheet of the Audit Recommendation Summary, and it goes through nine categories and then a tenth looking at last year's recommendations. And to be none across the board is just very commendable.
Excellent.
It's, I'm sure, and I'm trying to think of a good analogy with regards to some, like winning a sports championship and Michael Gorski and his whole team getting a modified opinion. So congratulations.
Thank you. It is a team effort. The whole district and the board chairs in this good report tonight.
Very good.
Okay, we were very happy to hear that. Thank you for your work. And, Mr. Gorski, yes, you and your team should be applauded. We are always looking forward to an unmodified opinion. We're glad that we're continuing to have that. So, and thank you because you were new eyes on our budget. We thought that that was prudent and also, you know, professionally, you know, necessary. So, thank you for your help and I'm glad we were all very happy with the results.
Yes, thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night. Mr. Chiarella, please.
Yeah, okay. I would like to make a motion. It is recommended that the members of Monroe Township Board of Education accept and approve the previously submitted draft reports, annual comprehensive financial report, the Auditor's Management Report on administrative findings, financial compliance and performance, and the Corrective Action Plan, CAP, indicating that there are no recommendations for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021.
You're moved.
Who moved it? Mr. Tofano?
I'll second that.
And Mr. Rutske. We'll call.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, thank you all, board members also. Motion passes. And again, Mr. Gorski, well done.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. I believe it's your turn to, do you want to? Ms. Chanley, would you like to begin?
Certainly.
Okay, so the next item, in conjunction with the presentation, is the Board Discussion on the Budget Philosophy, which is apropos for what we just went through, so take it away.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arminio. I just want to take a quick, quick moment to say thank you very much. I appreciate all the support that I've received. I look forward to working in this acting capacity to do as many great things as possible as we can do as a team for what's best for the children of Monroe, because that is our first and primary responsibility. I do want to say thank you very much to my team, who is here in support of both the Board of Education, the parents, the community, and everybody. So thank you very much. So at this time, with no further ado, I'm going to begin. I was going to stand as a courtesy and respect to you, but because I want to make sure I'm in the microphone, I'm going to remain seated here. So at this time, we first need to say thank you to the Board of Education. As you know, but should be reminded, the Board of Education are volunteers. They come out here to serve their community, to serve you, the community, for the betterment of your children. So I do want to say thank you because we know it's all time consuming. And at this time, we are going to present our development of a budget philosophy for fiscal year 2022-2023. So, once again, and I do not like to read to you, but I do think it's important to notate that the budget philosophy establishes an annual school budget that entails a creation of a framework for a budget that supports a democratic plan of appropriate funding. So basically, the reason why I think it's important that we put that up there, and I'm not going to continue to read to you because you most certainly can read this yourself, and then, once it's appropriated, it will be posted for you to peruse at your leisure. The budget philosophy is very important because what it does is it allows the public to see where the Board of Education is coming from with respect to creation of a budget and being fiscally responsible. It is imperative that you have an understanding of foundationally where things have come from and understand the needs, the wants. And of course, at the end, I love the saying, "The must haves," because we must have what we need to do to have children be successful. Oh, I apologize. I went back one too fast. That's it. Okay, so at this time, Mr. Gorski is going to handle the numbers, and then I'm going to come back to talk a little bit about technology and so forth at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chanley. We're going to begin looking at revenues because revenues define the size of the budget. With the pent-up demand across the board, especially with facilities, this district can easily spend $25 million in an annual budget, more than we are entitled to. So we are restricted and the size of the budget is limited and determined by revenues. One of the areas with revenues that administration can control and help create revenues is with excess surplus. And you heard from the audit report that overall, excess surplus grew over $3 million this year. However, the specific figure in this category dropped by about $600,000 compared to last year. What does that mean with the budget? Every year, excess surplus is required by statute to carry over as a revenue source to future year's budgets. So where you start off with a $600,000 figure that's less than the preceding year, you're starting off with a $600,000 less revenue figure to start. So although there is additional monies with the 4% that's in the unassigned fund balance, this is the part that carries over to the budget, and it's $600,000 less than last year, mainly because Falcon Care could not contribute any retained earnings this year. One thing I would like to say is that over time, since the inception of the program, Falcon Care has transferred over $2 million for unrestricted use to the general fund, but because of the school closures and everything last year, it was hampered. The next slide is another significant revenue source to the district, and it goes to the local tax levy. And this is why I'm not allowed to work this. But the tax levy is allowed to grow 2% by statute, and there's some adjustments to the tax levy growth, including healthcare costs. If your district is experiencing incredible, extraordinary healthcare costs, you're eligible for a cap expansion relief, which we were eligible for for many years ago, but haven't been because our healthcare costs have been very well contained. Another area is enrollment. The state of New Jersey does their own trend line analysis on enrollment, and districts like Monroe, who are growing heavily in enrollment, get an automatic adjustment for enrollment to the cap. Unfortunately, last year, we did not qualify for any. So out of conservatism, we're anticipating only a 2% growth in the tax levy from the preceding year, which is an increase in revenues of $2.2 million. So so far, we lost 600 in excess surplus. We're picking up 2.2 here. And that'll take us to the next revenue source, which is transfers from other funds. Falcon Care, ECE, both incurred a combined loss for the year June 30, 21, so there is no recommendation forthcoming for any transfer of retained earnings to support the budget. We are working hard to get this program back on track. Dr. Lehman in particular has come up with some very good ideas, and so has Ms. Chanley with her recent addition to the Central Office. So we are going to meet with the Falcon Care Director, who is new, and hopefully redesign this program to be a little bit more efficient and even offer some more attractive offerings on a tuition basis. So the budget will not be allowing any transfer from Falcon Care, ECE. Capital Reserve, as the auditor presented, last year transferred $550,000 into the '21-22 budget. So the figure that's in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report does not reflect this transfer because it occurred this year. There's only about a $20,800 balance in Capital Reserve, which I see is making Mr. Teague very uncomfortable because Capital Reserve is a reservation of money for things that are in a district's long-range facility plan. This is an area that needs replenishment. The Board of Education can do that by June 30 by transferring money from excess surplus to here, but by doing so, you're competing with program and instructional needs and other needs throughout the budget, so it's very difficult to replenish this account. And so therefore, $0 are available to be transferred from Capital Reserve. The next slide takes us to state aid. And under S2, which is an addition to the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, Monroe is one of the biggest beneficiaries in the state with increased state aid, but it's being distributed in an installment basis. I believe we have three years left. And conservatively, I anticipate that we could have anywhere between $500,000 to $750,000 of additional aid next year. But because that is so unknown at this time, conservatism again in the budget suggests that you budget the same amount that you got last year, and if you get a little more, it's gravy. So we have no increase budgeted for general fund state aid, and that's how the district has operated for many years. So for the '22-23 budget, when you combine all of those most significant revenue areas, the total net projected new budget resources is just under $1 million. That is extremely lean. It's conservative, but certainly $1 million does not keep up with all of the appropriation requirements that are coming. So we have a desperate revenue situation to begin with. Turning to the appropriation side now, which is the spending. Spending is driven by student enrollment. That's why many school districts are losing state aid. They have declining enrollment. Monroe, on the other hand, is not. Now, we are working on the ASSA report, which counts every student in the district right now. That should be completed shortly. But using the last projections from the district's demographer, you could see that enrollment is still trending up and that will have an impact on spending needs. More students, more sections, more IEPs, more buses, more staff, et cetera. Salaries and benefits is approximately 75% of the general fund budget. Aggregate district salaries are approximately $70 million. So if you look at our labor agreements, they're between 2.5% to 3.5% increases. On a $70 million number, that's an incredible growth in appropriations that's required because these agreements are in place already. So that's a mandate that we have to budget for at this time. Speaking with the health benefit broker, projected health benefit increases are in the 5% to 9% range, including a 2.5% New Jersey tax on insurers. Now, we will monitor the claims experience for our district through May-June. And we will continue to negotiate with Aetna, the current provider. We will get competitive quotes from every other provider out there. We will look at other alternatives, including self-funded, self-risk plans. The district had bad experience with that many years ago, but we look at it again every year. Our health increases over the last five years have averaged under 5%, which is very handsome. But again, out of conservatism, we don't know what the number's going to be. I don't know what the claims are going to be. We're going to keep an eye on it, but conservatively, that's what we're looking at. Health benefit premiums were just above $27 million last year, offset by $3.8 million collected by district staff through labor agreements for their contributions to benefits.
I need to just, I'm sorry, just say that again.
The health benefit premiums were $27.2 million net, offset by $3.8 million by district staff member contributions.
Thank you.
And those used to be mandated by law. Now they are all contractual. And finally, for health benefits, we are analyzing the effect of the New Jersey Educators' Health Plan and the forthcoming Garden State Health Plan and the consequences that could have on premiums and migration of employees from the current PPO over to these other plans. I believe at this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Lehman to talk about some of the personnel anticipations for next year that we've collected from mainly the principals.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. I do this slide and then I kick it back over to you for transportation. So this is a first kind of broad look at personnel needs for next year. What we do is we take our known enrollment. We look at historical growth, and we kind of take, like I said, a broad look at high school, middle school, elementary schools. As we move further along in the process, we begin to look really specifically at staffing needs. We look at sections, reduction in sections, transferring staff to cover those reduced sections and put them in areas of growth. But this is generated from some of the needs of the buildings, again, taking a quick, not a quick, but a preliminary look at where we stand now, what we currently have in terms of, there's an ELL teacher. That's one of our highest-growing demographics right now. So we certainly know that's a high need there. And as we sort out, for example, the elementary teachers, we may have reduction in sections in some schools. We may have growth needs in other schools, and oftentimes, they balance themselves out. But as we look at things now... But as we look at things now, again, this is a very broad stroke at our potential needs for staffing. It's a good point to, I guess, begin our budgeting process with. And again, this will get flushed out over the next several months and we'll prepare the final budget for you guys as we head into March. So Mr. Gorski, this is transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Our anticipated transportation needs after speaking with Mrs. McDonald, the Transportation Director, is that we will be required to replace six 54-passenger buses with cameras and GPS tracking units. The cost of those six buses is about $690,000. You could see all those items there, I'm not going to read them to you, but we need two vans, additional drivers. Transportation aids are becoming hard to find and we need three of those. Some computers and radio systems for the fleet. Dr. Lehman, were you going to take technology?
No, he gave it back to me.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So continuing with budget appropriation considerations, this is a very large amount of monies that's needed. And as Dr. Lehman has said, and we've already started our process with Mr. Gorski as well as with the principals. So we have what we call budget defense rounds. I know this has been mentioned to you before. It's very important, it's very valuable because it has a really good understanding of what the wants, needs, and once again, must haves that come directly from the school. So it's not the central office staff making any determinations about what the needs are. We go directly to the principals and they work in consort with the supervisors in the academic areas to say what it is that the needs are. So what we have listed for you because we think it's a point is not something that we are absolutely going to say all of this is going to happen because that's absolutely not going to be the truth because there would not be enough monetary revenue to be able to make these expenditures. But what we wanted to do is actually show, and once again, similar to, as Mr. Gorski said, I'm not going to read to you, but just to give an idea, if we, if the world was our oyster and everything could be done, then absolutely the appropriations and the appropriation considerations you see are something that we would want. So printers, projectors, laptops, servers for the backup cloud, copiers. Many of the copiers have seen, you know, their use. There are no more parts, you cannot even fix these copiers to a certain extent. So Wi-Fi upgrade for elementary schools as well as the transportation department. Continuing on with this particular area, you can also see that we have listed specifically for the high school on the next page into facilities. Now we're looking at not only the technology that's well needed, but now we're looking at construction of walls to separate classrooms. What do we do? We separate classrooms wide so that we can get an additional classroom for instruction. We're looking at, we place bench in the front of the school. What we need is champion series picnic tables, security cameras to increase monitoring for security for safety of staff, students. And as we continue with facilities, we look at also the needs that are dependent upon the growth. So the next page is literally listed for the, all of the middle school. And as you can see, temporary trailer cafeteria, it's a consideration. Is it something that can be done? Possibly not. Is it something that needs to be shared? Absolutely, due to the numbers. They feed approximately between 600 and 630 students, it changes from year to year, in a 30-minute period of time in one cafeteria. Interior, security cameras, increased safety in crowded areas. We have no security systems of any kind in the middle school inside the building. We do only have them externally. And then we look at stopgaps. Stopgap is a common term that became a common term in my own language when I was the principal for many, many years because we were constantly doing stopgaps and they've been working out beautifully until it gets to a point where you have limited stopgap left in the actual building to make these renovations. So looking at increased special needs population that we now have in our building because we keep a lot of the self-contained classrooms within our schools rather than going out of district. We've placed chillers and boilers, HVAC equipment. Looking at site engineering designs for front parking lots, for additional parking spaces. Some of the changes that we made this year. We moved transportation completely to the front, parent drop off in the back. It's better for safety, it's better for security. But now we have less parking spots and we have, you know, we're unable to accommodate the staff. The last page that I'm going to bring to your attention under facilities, once again, is middle school, Mill Lake and Woodland. And as you can see, just going right to the bottom, Woodland School replaced chiller and HVAC controls. Mill Lake School has a 20-year-old custodial floor scrubber machine. How do we keep things clean? How do we make sure that we meet all the standards through cleanliness, through appropriateness, through safety for the children? We need the machinery. The machine that they currently have is 20 years old. Thank you. And we look at the HVAC and equipment controls in the middle school, looking at exterior windows. So all the things that we listed for you to be able to see is not in any way do we believe that all of these things are going to come to fruition and be completed in our next budget year cycle. But we want the public to know and to see all of the things that are a requirement, whether it be eventually, we continue to hope that we have the monies that we need to do, it needs to be done. But we want to show you that the needs are there, you know, for the finances. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. So the next slide is the textbook slide. And again, we go through a preliminary budget phase and then we step into the budget defense rounds. The items you see here have been vetted by the supervisors. And as you see, every year, we try and, we almost have a replacement cycle for textbooks. So last year, we put a lot of attention to and replaced and revisited the middle school textbooks. Now that funding in theory, as well as the textbook cycle down and it's, the six-year cycle for our math program is up at the elementary level. So we will be revisiting that this year and looking to adopt new textbook series. And that's really the bulk of where the textbook adoption piece is for this upcoming budget. There is eighth grade social studies, the app development course, as well as pre-calc and honors pre-calc. So we'll be looking at those textbooks this year. Next slide. Oftentimes, we have specific needs that, you know, if we need a shared smaller instrument, oftentimes the building can pick that up mid-year. It's, you know, there's a savings here, we can buy an extra trumpet or trombone or something like that. Well, these are two five-octave marimbas and they're not small costs. So what we did is we pulled them out and we highlighted them as a potential to consider for next year's budget. It certainly is something the middle school and the high school could use, they can share. We have a tremendous arts program and this would just really help supplement that program. So again, it's on here for consideration as we go through our process. The TV studio equipment, as you can see, we have a lot of the equipment out here today, but it also links back into our production facilities. And this is something that we've had and we've been considering for several years and we're getting to the point where we really need to make an upgrade. Switch things to a digital format, there's a lot of analog stuff that's still going on. So there's been a big change since when we opened this building and technology as to where we could be now. So this is something that we should definitely consider. And then this is kind of our brag sheet. Despite COVID, we had a really tremendous high school graduating class. We had 91.6% attend college. That's very typical for what we have in terms of a typical school year. 96.2% graduated. Again, that's very consistent. And we love all of the postgraduate experiences that the students have. So 9.6% entered the workforce, the military, they were undecided. We had some students go to technical schools. We had 75% of our students who took the AP test score three or above. It's a very nice achievement. And we'll have in the next month or two, some more specific presentations on our AP scores. We had some very high AP scores this year, tremendous, a banner year. And it's, again, unrelated to COVID, I think it speaks a lot to the rigor we had and we, the standard we set and the rigor of instruction the teachers facilitated despite kind of a non-traditional school year last year. So that's it for this slide. Mr. Gorski?
Thank you. Very quickly, ratables are one of the most significant variables in determining the tax rate. It is the base upon which the levy is divided and shared. And the more sharing of the levy, the lower everybody's individual rate. Last year, you recall, we had a tax decrease with the budget and that was significantly driven by the growth in ratables in the township. Certainly, that has another side of the coin that you have this pent-up demand for new facilities that is just, you know, continuing to intensify. But just from an annual budget standpoint, it's a favorable thing because it reduces the tax rate. We were able to have a tax decrease last year for the first normal time other than the reeval in many, many years. This year, in some preliminary discussions with township officials, they feel that the ratable growth might be actually even slightly higher than last year. So that's a favorable aspect, but, you know, something we'll keep an eye on. And that brings us to the last slide, which is, if you wish, I'll be happy to introduce.
Sterling.
The recommendations on behalf of Ms. Shanley, Dr. Lehman, and all the administrative team is that we believe that we've demonstrated evidence to the Board of Education that our revenues are continuing to be restricted and the demands for spending in the district are unlimited. So for that reason, we ask that the board go to the maximum tax levy cap once again and prioritize construction projects as recommended by administration on a priority basis, curriculum recommendations as recommended by administration, salary and benefit increases. You know, benefits are still contingent, so we'll be conservative with the number. Transportation recommendations, program recommendations for new programs recommended by administration. And as part of this, administration will continue to review all non-mandated programs and services because that's one of the areas, aside from the newly proposed stuff, that any potential cuts would go to next, non-mandated programs and services.
Excuse your line.
Well, are we going to have a, shall we have the resolution read first and then the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, before we ask. That was your resolution?
No, ma'am, I believe Mr. Chairella may have the resolution, otherwise we'll get a copy.
We will, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Chairella.
How do we have, how could we have a resolution though before the board discusses?
Yeah, that's what we did last.
Okay, so let's have a discussion. Any questions for?
I have some questions.
The administration.
So, and I have three in particular. The first one is on the assessment for transportation, where will that put us, you know, on our quest to go have 100% of our own fleet?
Madam President?
Yes.
The district has been making great strides toward bringing in Aetna. This will help marginally because this is just a projection of retiring fleet. If there is appropriation availability, we could certainly add more buses to take back more. Last year, the Board of Education was very generous in buying two special education vans with lifts for wheelchairs because we had some very poor service coming from the commissions. So, you know, this is basically our minimum needs. But if there's available revenues and administration meets at the table, like let's say if we get more state aid, we'll look at facilities, we'll look at transportation, we'll bring it back to finance and you could allocate the money accordingly.
I just have two more, if I may.
Please.
On the cafeteria trailers for the middle school, the $900,000 price tag, is that for that, would that be for the year or would that be spread out over whatever the contract, whatever the contract is? So if it's five years, would that be spread over five years?
Go ahead, Mr. Gorski.
I believe it's an annual projection for this year's budget. So it's for one year. Now, again, it's conservative, we're not going to spend $900,000. And as we just identified in the BGET committee, that appropriation can be picked up by the food service fund, so it won't affect cap. But still, it's something noteworthy that everybody should see.
Right, right. No, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to, when I saw $900,000, I just wanted to make sure that whole thing would be able to be picked up. And then the last thing that I have is that capital reserve, the capital reserve fund's down to $20,000. So that's not, that's not a good thing. And we've done a lot with that capital reserve fund in the past. If you don't mind, would you mind explaining to everyone, for their identification, what we've used that for in the past and why $20,000 is so scary?
Yes. Years back, the Board of Education had somewhere between $1.5 million and $2 million in capital reserve. And this goes back several years. But to supplement the tax money raised and the other revenues in the budget to meet the facility needs, which are projects including mainly roof replacements, but also, you know, parking and paving lots and HVAC units come to mind. It's main, we've been very good picking up a large roof project every year. Apple Garth had a facelift, although no major infrastructure was replaced to reopen and that came from capital reserve. So it's been bled down now to basically nothing. And it's certainly the recommendation of administration to keep an eye on that and try to replenish capital reserve. It's a savings account to meet the need of facility needs here, which we have an immense amount across the board. The problem with funding it is, we could take it and put it on the May, April-May finance agenda to take a look at this. We'll give you a projection of how excess surplus number is growing at that point. And a committee and the board can make a determination that, you know, that next year's budget is important, but maybe we need to be a little more lean in the construction of a budget and take some of this excess surplus money and put it in capital reserve for future facility needs. That's a very good discussion to have at Finance Committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Karen, we'll go down the line.
Notes that I had. New Jersey School Board Association workshops have been touting other districts.
Get a little closer.
Other districts that are working with, I think, federal, but also on the state level for electric vehicle replacements in their fleet. And there being advantages to transition over to electric. So I'm wondering if we're investigating that at all as we start, you know, looking at the conversion here?
Yes, madam.
Yes.
That's a beautiful question, a beautiful consideration and initiative to transition a diesel fleet, for the most part, that gets about four to eight miles per gallon, over to a greener electric bus. And members may recall at the Atlantic City workshop a couple of years ago, you actually saw one of these vehicles on display where you could go kick the tires and talk to the vendor. Unfortunately, the prices of these vehicles and the subsidies and such haven't really been material enough that our other school districts in the county have really taken a step towards that yet. But it is extremely attractive and we're keeping an eye on it.
Another question I have is, I'm going to sit here as not a fan of always making this presumption that it's okay to go to cap, though I see the numbers, I get the numbers, I get the sell on wanting to always just start there that we have to go to cap. But I think we should always have the discussion and look at, what would it look like if we went to half the cap or not the cap? Where would we have to make cuts? What would it, what would it look like? So that we're not just always presuming that we could put that cap in there and bank on it and have the full board just go with it. Even though I understand the sell on it, I'd like to understand if we didn't approve going to cap or we really forced the issue, what would be cut? Where would we have adjustments?
I'll have Ms. Shanley speak to it and then Mr. Gorski, if you will.
So some of the things that you were able to see in here, and we did not want to provide all of the details, but we want to provide, we'll use the expression, the big-ticket items. Some of the concerns that we're seeing is largely related, I won't even get into the area of curriculum, which is first and foremost because, you know, materials for children to be successful goes without saying. But from a facility standpoint, if we didn't go to cap, some of the things that we would need to remove or to not move forward with would be items that must be done. So for example, when we look at HVAC, there are situations in all of the buildings in which we're always looking to make sure that we have, you know, we always make sure that we follow code and Mr. Teague does a fantastic job and make sure that everything is done correctly. But then you have the need, because of the age of the buildings, to make changes, to make improvements. So that would probably be one area. I know we've been very fortunate with the monies that Mr. Gorski just described and I was, I got a roof. So, you know, I understand that the roofs have been done. But I also know that we're on a, I'm trying to think of the expression, we're on a timeline, for lack of a better term, and Mr. Teague is shaking his head because he's here and I want to thank him. So if there's any specific questions, if we need to ask him. But I know that we have a timeline. So for example, when we had our budget defense rounds this particular week, you know, I asked and I said to the principals, is there anything, you know, that you would not want? Anything that you feel that perhaps we've missed, that you might need? HVAC and expansion to a program physically, you need to change a room, stopgap. And what they had all shared is that they are already on this timeline with Mr. Teague. So I think our concern is separate from the concept of, you know, books and we have to go through a proper yearly cycle, you know. I was here once where we waited 10 years to actually replenish the appropriate books. We were so far behind and Dr. Lehman is acknowledging that is, that is a fact. So I think in addition to that, if we were not to go to cap, some of the things that we feel are not pleasure in any way, they are necessities to keep the buildings going. You know, once you fall behind in the timeframe that's being set through the administration along with facilities, once you fall behind, we will not catch up. So I think that's a major concern. And looking at space, you know, of course, there's different, you know, resolutions and so forth and different conversations that we definitely are going to have and we've had at BGNT regarding, do you spend the money for a temporary? had at BGNT regarding, do you spend the money for a temporary cafeteria if we're going to be adding on to the middle school and so forth? So, perhaps that might be something that we would move to the side, but even if you move that to the side, looking at the other necessities, I didn't even touch upon technology, because whether or not we agree with the concept of technology moving forward, it's moving forward anyway. So, therefore, we need to make sure that we move forward with it. You know, and we knew what we saw, we were fortunate, we went virtual, we went remote, we had the capability to do it, and there's some areas in which we, once we go a little bit backwards, if we don't have the money to spend, then in a year, we're not backwards, one year, we're backwards three years because of, because of the growth. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Madam President, just to add, that was well said, just to add a figurative contribution
to that, you know, we're looking at about a million-dollar growth in revenues. So, I can say very confidently that when administration puts together all of the budgets that survived the defense rounds, we are going to be millions of dollars over cap. Now, if you, if the board was to choose not to go to the 2% tax levy growth and go half, like you said, 1%, that would throw another million dollars on the over-cap situation. And the next step is that you look at these newly proposed items, which some of them have been carried over for a few years, and you have to cut those first because it's more beneficial to cut new items before people have gotten accustomed to them, but after you extinguish those, you'll look at non-mandated programs and services, and that's where there's a little more pain felt, as we saw years ago, when the board decided to go into the areas of transportation and some other things. So, you know, perhaps in a year where you had a more generous revenue growth, or if there was a surprise to the state aid side and we picked up more, the board could easily say, well, you know, we put together a conservative budget here, we have some extra money here because state aid grew higher than expected, maybe we can pay a dividend back to the taxpayers and go lower with the cap requirement, but it's just going to be very challenging to do that.
Mr. Gorsky, you just mentioned some of the things that we have not been able to, that was, that was in a budget last year, like budget choices, but we were not able to complete in terms of capital. Could you just let us know what some of those were?
I could have Mr. Take talk for about 30 minutes on that, because a lot of the areas, when you're that significantly over-capped to cut, are the bigger-ticket items in facility upgrades, as opposed to required additional staff, additional programs, additional sections, additional IEP requirements. So, unfortunately, that's one of the easier areas to swing at, so I would, I would say that first.
Do you want him to? I have one more.
Second, though, there is technology, like Ms. Chanley said. Every year, we meet with the schools, and there are needs for new computer devices, and at the elementary levels mainly, and we've been doing it on an installment basis instead of doing it all the way like we should. New textbook adoptions are another area where we're leasing them at a 0% interest rate over three years. If we had some additional money, we could purchase them all outright, and that would give us some flexibility in the future.
Right, and the other thing I wanted to add, which was a big expenditure in the technology, so it was access points, which are imperative, especially when we bring our teachers back. So, during the situation with remote, the children may have remained home, but when the staff returned, if you don't have the appropriate access points to be able to move forward, you didn't have the proper technology, and we couldn't get the remote learning out to the children at home. So, I know that there was a lot of money spent in that area, and that is a combination of both the technology along with the physical facilities, because there's always an expenditure to purchase the access points and then to have it installed. So, when you look at a spreadsheet, you actually see two separate, two separate costs, the same thing if you put in extra extrons and so forth for the classrooms. So, I do think that was an area where a lot of money was spent, well-spent, and was well-needed.
One more item on the technology concept there. I see the two items for cameras, one at 350, one at 719, so that's over a million on security cameras in elementary and middle schools. There, I would ask that we weigh the pros and cons of technology versus maybe personnel, and just having the salary cost and eyes on the ground.
Absolutely.
As needed, instead of, you know.
Absolutely, and I agree, and I think when we had the budget defense rounds, I think that it was appropriate for them to put it in there, because it's something that's always that want, but I would agree 100% that when you look at security cameras, there is great value, especially because some of the issues that we deal with to security and, you know, you know, we discussed it with Mr. Piero and so forth, things that are unfortunately occurring to our grounds when we are not present. So, that was one of the things, perhaps, for maybe outside. So, looking at that, we might say, well, the middle school's security is not something that's realistic moving forward at this time, due to the constraints of, you know, financial difficulties, but perhaps upgrading or making, putting in some better quality, maybe at some of the elementary schools where we've had some damage. So, we have these beautiful playgrounds for all these different facilities, and there's no one there, so it might be appropriate to perhaps look at maybe a section of an elementary school, or a section of another elementary school, and look and see where we could be prudent, but at the same time, do something. So, I would definitely agree with that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Belko, did you want to go?
I, Ms. Beerman covered just about everything I was going to ask, so thank you for the explanations.
I think you were, you were concerned, though, about things that had been projected to be.
Oh, yes, well, that was, yes, thank you very much, because I made a list, and it's right here in front of me. So, I was concerned when I was comparing last year's budget philosophy PowerPoint to this year's budget philosophy PowerPoint, and I noticed that there were a lot of projects that were on last year's facilities list that didn't make this year's facilities list. So, I just want to make sure, like, I counted six HVAC projects that were on last year's project. Did we complete all those, or do we have plans to have those all completed? And I'm looking at Mr. Take only because.
Yes, absolutely.
He would have the answers to those questions. Are we looking at having those completed by June of 2022?
Mr. Take, could I ask you a second?
That's the budget, the budget.
To the microphone, just because you might have a more detailed response.
Yes, I just wanted to see where we are and where we prioritize, because we keep talking about HVAC, 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 and I want to make sure that we're not having HVAC problems, boiler problems.
We are not, I'm not sure which six specific projects you're talking about, but we are currently.
Well, I could give you them.
Sure.
The PAC at the, at the current middle school, who used to be the high school, was listed as an HVAC issue. The middle school HVAC didn't specifically say where to replace boilers in HVAC, also at the middle school, and Apple Garth was, Apple Garth had three things, the roof, the boilers, and the HVAC, and then last year, also Woodland, which I saw, Woodland was on the list this year for HVAC as well. So, I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to see where we prioritize and where we are this year versus what you've presented to us for '22, '23.
So, in this current year's budget, the board authorized money for design, so these projects are rather elaborate. So, we have contracted with a mechanical engineering firm who is designing those projects, with the exception of Apple Garth, because up until recently, the board's approach had been that Apple Garth was going to be replaced. Currently, the board has engaged SSP Architects to do an in-depth feasibility study at Apple Garth, which is ongoing, and the board will digest that information and determine what you want to do there. But all the other projects you mentioned there, the board, in this current fiscal year, authorized design for those projects, so they can be bid, and the money that you see being proposed this year is then to actually construct those.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Take.
Is that it, Ms. Belko?
Yes, thank you, that answers a lot of my questions. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mike. Can you remind me, what did we do with last year's budget? Did we, did we go to cap last year?
Madam, certainly, we did go to cap.
And did we use all of, did we use banked cap last year?
I don't believe we had any banked cap available last year, we did in the preceding year.
And we have no banked cap this year.
Yes, banked cap is where the Board of Education, for whatever reason, did not budget to cap in a year. You're allowed to carry that over for subsequent year's use before it expires. The board has used all of its previous banked cap, there's none left, and the board also did use reserves last year to balance some of the needs of facilities and other areas.
Okay, thank you. I just.
Brooke?
Thank you. So, my one question is, I know we have a lot of feasibility studies going on right now, and knowing our overcrowding and our growth issues, is there any need for trailers or anything in the budget for next year to help us manage some of the growth?
It's fine, either one of us, we've been discussing this, so.
So, both of you can answer.
Okay.
Sure, ladies first.
Certainly, thank you. So, we want to be cognizant of the need of trailers because of the timeframe, you know, as we move forward and we have conversations and the board makes decisions based upon referendum and what that looks like. We have to also be prudent of money spent, we want it to be well-spent. So, some of the conversations that were happened at the BGNT meeting was trailers for cafeteria, because at the juncture in the middle school, which is the one area, and of course, the high school is the other area that's been brought up, I believe, quite a few times, and it was in the past referendum that did fail, and the conversation is classroom usage for unhoused students. We do have trailers at the middle school that allows currently for, not all, but half of what the state views as unhoused students, and then the need possibly for trailers for the cafeteria. So, there is some consideration, and there are some resolutions that are in today's board of agenda, because we want to have the conversations about spending money perhaps on feasibility studies that haven't started yet, because we do not want to spend money on trailers that perhaps might need to be moved if construction was to move forward, because then you're spending money that really doesn't give you anything back when you have to remove it if it could be spent in other ways. Did you want to add something?
Madam President, and one of the problems with trailers is they are a major consumer of resources in the general fund budget. If the board was to put together a small referendum for modular additions or Butler buildings in lieu of trailers, it would be budgeted for in a separate fund called the debt service fund, that would not be competing with teacher salaries and benefits and everything else that you were just, saw that's of need. Trailer lease payments, with the exception of the cafeteria lease trailers, are an item in the general fund budget in the other purchase services for instruction account, and it directly competes with the cap and all the other projected needs. So, it is a very inefficient temporary way to house students, is the best way I could put it.
We'll discuss that further in the BGNT committee, but it's the dilemma that we have had for years, whether, you know, we have an immediate need to house our students, and then we don't want to spend that kind of money, you know, if we're going to go for referendum and get a successful reference. So, that'll be a further discussion on that one. Anyone on this side? Mr. Polari?
Yeah, Madam President, every time this year when we talk about the budget philosophy, you know, butterflies go in your stomach, you're always nervous about it, but I think that one of the things that I wanted to ask in the beginning was that we had some additional funding coming in because of the COVID situation, which we will not be having, but then again, you have the Falcon Care come in, hopefully, it's not an offset, but you get things like that. One thing that I would like to offer to this board moving forward is that there's a few things that I saw on the budget philosophy, like the marimba, two of them for 24K, and the studio for 25,000. I think that's something the community can do through fundraising, through social activities or something like that to address it. I know it's not going to make it, but you talk about a $130 million budget, that's a drop in the bucket, but some of these can be taken out. And I'll just give you one example, that in our, in my Newark office, we had to go to Agile Workspace, every single piece of furniture and the computers that we have, we donated to Raton School. I was not aware of it, just the custodian did it on his own, because he didn't want to throw it out. I know that we don't want to take stuff that's being thrown out for the school district, but what kind of a sophistication of a computer do you need to do a transportation planning, right? So, basic computer would be good enough for that. So, can the community members participate in that? I think this needs to go into the public a little bit more, so that somebody can help and assist. That's all I would like to offer.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes, I just have a few comments. One thing I noticed in the budget philosophy presentation was an inaccurate number of our students for this year. Currently, we have 6,882. I know it was a projection for this year based on Ross Haber, but the projection seems to be much higher than what we actually have listed in the agenda today as enrollment. So, I just wanted to point that out. And then, you know, we heard from the auditor that we had a, I think she called it a great year. We have $9.4 million left in unassigned within the budget. It sounded like we are fiscally very healthy, especially coming out of COVID. While I do appreciate putting together a conservative budget, I think that we need to look at what our actual needs are. We seem to, a lot of times, underestimate revenue, and I understand, you know, the need to do that to a point, to, you know, increase your excess surplus, but I think what happens, and when you go to these budget defense rounds, and, you know, the school administration is giving you basically their needs in order, things get cut out that affect curriculum, that affect student achievement, that we could probably, if we weren't so conservative on our revenues, include that. So, I would like to see if we could, you know, try to incorporate what the schools are asking for, because, you know, to Mr. Polari's point, the marimba, you know, I think that has been on a list for quite some time now, and, you know, just as disclosure, my children are not in the music program, so it's not a personal thing that I'm looking for, but if you follow along with our music program, and you see, the students are at a stopping point of excelling further. If they don't have that piece of equipment, the program can't progress. So, there is a true need for that, as well with the TV production. If you look at other schools, they have enormous TV production programs. Ours is fantastic, but you don't want to say, no, we can't add something in that's going to, at the high school level, help our students achieve what other students in other schools are achieving, you know what I'm saying? I think, you know, you can't say yes to everything, but I think, you know, taking a conservative approach, yes, I'm for going to cap and expanding the budget, but I would like to see us really look at what our administrators in our buildings are asking for that will help our students achieve more. I think 75% taking the AP test and scoring three or higher, I think that's great, but that's a quarter of our students taking AP classes that are not going to get college credit for it. There has, that has to be looked into, and, you know, how can we help those students achieve better? Because that's a quarter of the kids that have taken those classes with the expectation that they're going to get college credit for that, and they're not. It's a significant number, and I think, you know, being conservative with our budget, yes, but we have to, as Mrs. Chanley said, we have to put the curriculum and the students' needs as a priority. Our facilities, yes, are a huge priority. We have a lot of, you know, tasks in front of us, but I think we have to give equal consideration all around to it.
I just have a question, or.
Go ahead.
The idea of not getting credit for the AP scores? Because I don't understand why you're saying that.
If you don't score a high, if you don't score three or higher on the AP test, you don't get credit. It doesn't.
A four or five, I think. I think the threes are pretty skeptical, but I thought you were saying like nobody was getting credit.
No, 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 we said, no, I said a quarter, a quarter of the students.
Okay, I'm sorry.
25% of the students taking the AP tests and not.
25 were getting it.
Gotcha, okay, sorry.
Which I think is great, like I said, but I think we need to see where are, we are deficient, and where we can get that 25% of the students taking that class to the next level.
I agree 100% with what you said, Ms. Gerby, but I, and I think that you'd be very pleasantly surprised to see that many, many of the wants and needs of the administration that they put forth during the defense rounds really are, especially, I'm going to say to the elementary level, because their budgets are so much smaller to deal with, so we're able to almost give them, I won't say all, but I would say conservatively, we'll use that word, since we're using it a lot this evening, everything that they ask for, for the needs of the children. I can only speak for my role currently at this time. I know that at the elementary level, because their budgets, like I said, are so much smaller, we're able to accommodate. At the middle school level, and we haven't had our budget defense round yet for the high school, so this will be my first time, but at the middle school level, which I've been doing year after year after year, I would say that we've been very fortunate that we are given a lot of what we need, which in, plays a major role with the children. So, technology, for good or for bad, is here to stay and just keeps on going and going and going, and the access points that we were granted, we worked in consult with the technology department at the time, it was Mr. Washington, and we worked alongside Mr. Take, we needed that, because you can't go to the next level, you can't have Chromebooks, and you can't have all these different, you know, iPads if you don't have the access points. So, I do agree with that, and I do agree, the marimba is an excellent example. Someone might say, whose child may be, and I think it's great that your child's not in it, because you're not speaking for yourself, you might say, well, that's a really expensive piece of equipment, but if that piece of equipment allows the students in that particular area, I'm always, I was always following, and I used to go with the music programs on their trips, and they're exceptional. Music programs in this district are exceptional, we should be very, very proud, they are exceptional, without question. If they need that marimba, and you're absolutely right, that is in the budget every year, and that is cut. So, that's a good example that we, maybe you're right, and I do think, and I will work alongside Dr. Lehman, of course, and Mr. Gorsky, and once again, we once again, we have the input from all of the administration to see, you know, perhaps we're, we need to look at the little, the little things that add up and maybe that's the way to go at first. And then if we need to make the cuts that we need to make, we do it to the best of our abilities because you want to, you want to try and accommodate everybody and that's not always possible. And I do think, you know, being, and I am a resident here now, and I think being in this district as a professional educator for 19 years, it's a great thing that everybody wants to live here, but it's what's happening is that these facilities, it does eat up all the money. And you're absolutely right, we cannot ignore that first and foremost, textbook adoptions are on time, a compliment to Dr. Lehman because it wasn't always like that. And it has been, it has been in the last three or four years, we have been where we need to be. So I do think that we're being cognizant and being respectful of everybody's needs. And I do think it is a conversation to have about equipment, you know, just like when we look at the sports, sports are of major importance to children, that we talk about social, emotional, social, emotional is not just in the classroom, it's everywhere, the music program, the sports program, the science programs. We've advanced so many different programs in the middle school and high school. And I do agree and I know that Dr. Higgins, when he was a vice principal, proposed this and it's something we do at the middle school and he does it as well, and he has a fabulous, really successful enrichment program that he has now during the week. And that allows children, not just children in areas of need, but children in all the different areas. So if you're a very bright child and you want to aspire to be even more successful, they have this opportunity to work with teachers, professionals that can help them. So I think perhaps maybe looking at that AP and why the children didn't score higher, because even though 75% is a great number, what about the 25% that didn't? So maybe looking at the enrichment programs that were created at the high school to say, what can we do differently? Not necessarily do that we're not doing, but maybe do it in a different way. So I do appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions. So, no, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. So last year, Mr. Gorski, we bought 54 buses, correct? Approximately, how many buses?
I want to go by memory, I think it was nine, nine fifty-four passengers.
Oh, fifty-four, that's where the fifty-four came in, nine. And this year, we need six.
Yes, and as we discussed with Mr. Charelle's question, that's just the bare bones replacement schedule for the 15 year if it's totally rotted out.
I know, and we have to do that by law, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Last year on our budget, did we have, and again, correct my numbers here, did we have 30 new personnel positions or approximately?
It may have started off with 30, I think it ended up with about 10 to 12.
Oh, so we budgeted for approximately 30 and we went to 10 to 12?
I think 30 may have been projected at this juncture of the budget, but when it got through defense rounds, can you wait another year before adding in another FTE full-time equivalent? It ended up being down around, down around 10.
I mean, I think there were times when I counted way more than 10 new positions on the, so how, so how could that be?
A lot of new staff compliments were added with different philosophies in previous years. And even this year, we're noticing, Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman and I, that the requests for additional staff coming from the elementaries who we've met with thus far have not been that significant. That may change when we get to the middle school and high school, I don't know.
Do we have a projection as to how much, how many, how much staff we, we need for the 2022, 23?
I would say probably 20, 20 across the board.
Okay, okay. And like you said, and of course, if we need students, I mean, that's as important as the technology and the books and everything, we need, we need the staff, but that is the bulk of our obligation in terms of financing.
Yes, and keep in mind too, this is an obvious statement, but when you add 20 staff, 30 staff, 10 staff, it continues to snowball in an aggregate salary number that just keeps increasing every year. So we do look at that very carefully and Dr. Lehman has done a fantastic job with Dr. Alvek previously, really charting out where all of the staffing needs are in the district and what schools maybe not be utilizing all of their staff and can they be transferred? And we've saved a lot of FTE full-time equivalents through that process.
And one other thing about the music, which I have always been enamored with in this community, it's fantastic and the children are so good at it. And of course, our staff who teaches them. But Princeton University, I know they sometimes, and other universities, they have used equipment. So do we have an actual person that is tasked with maybe looking for this kind of stuff or responding to when we get?
The answer is yes. Mr. Teig presented it, I don't know if it was BGT or somewhere, that same flyer that you're referencing from Princeton. That was an auction where the district could have bid on those items.
Oh, I see.
But there are, if you come into the central office in the administrative building, nearly all of the furniture in that building was donated.
Right.
Much of which came from Janssen Pharmaceuticals years ago, some very good old style mahogany stuff.
Johnson &amp; Johnson always had, had that as an offer also. I'm wondering if we can't put feelers out to places for donations for those kinds of like equipment, I don't know, and instruments?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, just to go beyond waiting for someone to offer it, maybe we can put out something that says, gee, we'll take, you know, we'll take some music equipment or something, who knows?
You know, maybe I can propose when the board establishes the board goals or the district goals, that we could look at community partnerships, including soliciting donations of excess equipment and things.
Okay, all right. I think now we need to go for that motion. Are you satisfied, Mr. Charelle, that we discussed it? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So it is recommended that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education establish and adopt a budget philosophy for 2022 and 2023 school year, which tasks the administration to prepare a budget that responsibly meets the demands of continuing significant student growth and facility needs as well as program and service requirements without exceeding the board's maximum spending authority, which would necessitate going out to a vote while prioritizing the following items subject to the restrictions of the administration. Number one is construction projects to be recommended by administration on a priority basis. Number two, curriculum recommendations to be recommended by administration. Number three, salary and benefit increases at a conservative range due to their contingent status. Number four, transportation recommendations recommended by administration. Number five, programs as recommended by administration. And number six, administration review of non-mandated programs and services with eliminations as a possibility. This action by the board will enable the board to fulfill its educational responsibility to the district students in a thorough, efficient and fiscally prudent manner while also ensuring that maintenance of the district resources and facilities are in place.
So moved.
Question. I don't understand why this vote would be taken prior to a public forum.
Madam, public forums are required with the preliminary and final adoptions, it's not required here, it's never been done before. I mean, certainly you could look at doing it that way in the future or somebody could make a motion if Mr. Vouche agrees to open up a public forum on this.
Well, this is what, this is almost like, the discussion was about what we would sort of tentatively agree to. This is not something that is solid, right? So it's really just a discussion of what the needs are, where we think we can go with them. It doesn't mean we have to go to cap, we hope that we don't, but we have to discuss, you know, going forward, we have to have some ability to.
So it's just a framework for them to start figuring out the budget.
Exactly.
Good, thank you.
Okay, yeah, there'll be hearings, budget hearings for the public. There'll be two hearings, there's the presentation, hearing, and then a second hearing afterwards. So that is really where we, we do the actual, really, not really cutting, but where we do the detail of the spending.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, let's go.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Mr. Charelle?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rotzky?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to accept budget philosophy passes unanimously.
Yes, thank you all for your attention to this. We want what's best for the children. Okay, the next, our committee reports. Shall we start with finance since you were?
Sure.
On the agenda today.
So we had a finance committee meeting on November 10th. So I'm not going to go through the, you know, I have a lengthy synopsis here of what we, what we talked about with regards to the annual comprehensive financial report, but we discussed that and we had a presentation at that time. We asked, we asked a lot of questions and I think they did a very good job of answering all of our questions. We also received a 22, 23 budget update. Mr. Gorski provided the budget update indicating that the budget defense rounds have been scheduled and some of the preliminary meetings have taken place with Dr. Lehman. And then Mr. Gorski also requested that the board host a budget philosophy presentation at the November 17th, 2021 Board of Education meeting because of the importance of communicating budget priorities from the board. And I think we've done that, right? So, and then we reviewed the monthly attorney, the monthly attorney bills. Mr. Gorski presented the monthly attorney fees from Porzio, Bromberg and Newman PC as requested by the finance committee. And the committee asked a lot of questions about that, we did appreciate the information. And I just want to say that as of, as of right now, we did, we wanted an analysis of what, just a comparison between an in-house attorney and where we were at this time when we had an in-house attorney to now and where we are. And we're still in the ballpark, right? So that's, so that's a good thing. So that's, we just wanted to know where we're, what we're standing, if we were exceeding where we were when we had an inside, you know, an in-house attorney. So for right now, as we're doing this, you know, we're still assessing the situation. So it was a good, it was, it was good to have that information. And then the, the last thing that we have was consideration of a Roth 403B pension fund. So Mr. Gorski presented an MTEA request to create an additional, different compensation plan known as the Roth 403B. Mr. Gorski explained the tax difference between the proposed Roth 403B and recommended that the board create the sidebar agreement and implement it. The members agreed and the recommendation will be presented to the full board at the next Board of Education meeting, which is today. And I would like to add to that also is that there's no additional cost, there's no cost to the taxpayers, the board or to the MTEA, it's just another option. That's it.
May I have Ms. Belko? Oh, I'm sorry, does anybody want to ask Mr. Charelle a question? I think we've exhausted the finances, right? But if you want, go ahead.
I would actually just like to say, it's a great idea to add the Roth 403B and for all the young teachers that are coming up, to get tax-free growth, hands down, will serve them very well in retirement. Pay your taxes now, get tax-free growth forever, great idea. So thanks for that. That's my endorsement.
Thank you.
Mr. Tifano, can Ms. Belko go first?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So the curriculum committee met last week, November 10th, and we had, it was a very good meeting, there was a lot of, it was a lot, it was about a lot of clubs that are coming up and we had some really good discussions. The first one I want to talk about is the new 3D design club that they came up with. And we were presented with this, that we have 3D printers here, we have 3D club that's going on, and they want to have a co-curricular club that will be an extension of the class, the design class. And Dr. Lehman, please help me along here. The class that they're taking, they want to be able to extend, being able to work on the projects that they're doing. And part of this, they want to include is a humanitarian effort to help make prosthetic devices. And they did present to us a video that there wasn't a dry eye at the table after we saw it because one of these clubs was able to provide a child with a prosthetic hand and the video literally showed us this child getting this prosthetic, prosthesis. It was part of this whole humanitarian effort across the world, it's not just local, it's not just the United States. And so this, our kids want to, basically the requirement, the application here says from the student, a desire to do something good in the world and learn 3D printing and how that works. So to me, like, how do you not, you know, go with that? So when they, they had all the pieces of information, please watch the curriculum committee, you'll see that, that information there. So that was one item that was presented to us. Then we had entrepreneurship and innovation club. That was another really great presentation. And the purpose they want to do is for this high school to have a platform to expose students to various methods of entrepreneurship and innovation through challenging activities and for them to get together. One of the things that, that the teacher reported to us was that when she put this class together, that she's, this again is another co-curricular club, and when they put this class together, she discovered from these kids that they already own businesses, these kids already are earning money, these kids are already entrepreneurs, and she can take this now to the next level. She was a teacher that just, she blew me away with what she was able to talk about and the things that she gave us information on. And I'm not doing it justice with this report here, so I really do urge you to go and watch the video for that. Then the next presentation we had was from a new club they want to put together called the Latin Honor Society. And similar to other Latin, other honor societies, this is also, this club would promote the study of Latin and Roman history and culture. It also would be a great way to include more opportunities in the Latin department. And unlike other, you know, languages and other language honor societies, you don't have to be taking Latin, you don't have to be a student in Latin unless you're, you know, taking the Latin and you're going to do the honor society part of it. So it's kind of like a, an inclusive club. So if you're not taking Latin, but you want to be part of a club like this and do some of the fun things that they're talking about doing, you can. And they'll work hand in hand to, to have that. And I thought that was a really great thing to have, you know, anybody can join the Latin club so that they can learn different items and different things. The, the one club that is currently named the Table Tennis Club wants to change their name to Lifelong Active Rec Games. So that is, Table Tennis has been a longstanding club here at Monroe Township High School and the kids have always loved it, but they want to be able to do other activities. They want to be able to maybe do, what was that game that we're talking, that they were talking about?
Spike ball.
Spike ball. And it's, you hit the ball on the trampoline, you don't spike people on the trampoline. We made sure that we had, we were very clear about exactly what that was. So spike ball was one of the other activities and different things. So that name change, you know, doesn't see much. The last committee that we, was presented to us was the Monroe Township High School Book Club. And honestly, I was really excited about this one because this was, the students want a book club. Like, I just, you know, that to me in this day and age, for students to want a book club, to me, says a lot about what we're doing here with our, with our students and our curriculum and trying to promote reading. And I have to tell you, the student who is presenting this club reached out to me personally because it originally wasn't on the agenda, but I talked to Dr. Lehman and we got it on the agenda so we could be brought up here tonight for the full board to review it and to go through it. I have to say, it was one of the most fun curriculum committee meetings we've had so far this year. I really did enjoy it. I, you know, call me a nerd or call me what, but I just really thought it was a great committee meeting, going over all the clubs and different things. So thank you for that and we'll have these being presented tonight by the Assistant Superintendent.
Can I?
Yeah, I think Dr.
I just want to add one thing. So the video reference for the 3D club is hyperlinked in the minutes. So feel free to go right to the minutes and you can click on the link and the video will come right up.
Great. Mr. Charelle?
I'm not going to call you a nerd, but I am going to, I just want to make a point because some of you, some of the board members have been around a while and Mr. Gorski, you probably remember this, I don't know if you will, Dr. Lehman, but we talked about the Latin club and we went through Latin as a, as a course. And then somebody came up and was yelling at us, why do we have a club about Latin people and Latin America and things like that, when they didn't understand that it was, it's a club and a language of science and that's why we have that. So I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that in case there are any questions about what that, what the club actually is, but it's, Latin is the language of science and we need it.
Yes, absolutely.
But also, and they're talking about classical literature.
Yes, yes.
So that was a part of it as well as like.
There's a very long narrative here in the club application, so in the interest of time, I didn't want to.
Good.
So, yeah, it was, it was very good. But it was, I was excited.
Not to always be the Debbie Downer, but when we add clubs and expand like this, there's costs involved to some extent, I suspect, stipends for teachers or leaders or whatever they're involved in and some of them have budgets. Do we look at, you know, elimination and addition so that we kind of keep that all in check or are we always in a growth situation? Just out of curiosity.
So, as the student population changes, clubs kind of ebb and flow. Some years, we may add more than we drop just because of student interest, but that's the whole thought behind the clubs is, they cater and they are designed around our students' interests. So, we have a growth in this area right now. Some years, there are three, four, five clubs that we just don't run because that student population has transitioned out, or, you know, the topics are irrelevant. So, there is kind of an ebb and flow. Many of the costs associated with specifically, like the three D design club and things, the products and the tools they're using are curricular tools. So, they're embedded in what we have in our operating budget. And then, when clubs operate their initial year, it's a no-cost, even the advisors are volunteers. So, they turn into a paid position on their second year.
Thank you.
So, there is almost like a trial period. If it turns to be a club that doesn't actually get the attendance that was anticipated, that's part of the consideration. We have one of our high school vice principals that, we have like a Google attendance system, so we have a very accurate kind of tracking of what clubs are being engaged in and what ones aren't, and where students are in the building and things like that.
Mr. Polari?
Yeah, I think Ms. Belko talked about four different clubs. As a matter of fact, one of them is being combined with another existing club. You know, we talked about that, that's really good way of doing it, so see if the critical mass is there. And if the club starts expanding, like Dr. Lehman just said, then it can go on its own. But I think they're doing the right thing by actually combining and starting something new.
That was the table tennis. So, someone brought up, can we do some other kind of fun activities piece? Mr. Kalella brought the two clubs together, and they said, absolutely, we want to do more than table tennis, let's just kind of combine the whole idea instead of having a whole bunch of separate, you know, game clubs and things.
If I may, so, Mr. Kalella runs basically an annual audit, or maybe twice a year, semi-annual audit of all the clubs.
Yep. I mean, he's constantly up to date with attendance, and he also screens, and the whole high school administration does, to make sure that, like we said, there are no duplicate. We look at the mission, we look at the vision, we look at what the goals are of the clubs, so we don't have two clubs with the same exact task, operating side by side, and, you know, pulling resources from each other.
I always thought that we should get, and now I'm like a little nervous about saying something, but getting like a report, an audit report maybe every year at the end of the year to see...
We can actually, I can have Mr. Kalella come to Curriculum one time, and towards the end of the year, and he can kind of report on, you know, these are the most popular clubs, this is the kind of attendance we have, these are the things they've done. I try and highlight, you know, my report, kind of our ongoing activities of the clubs and athletics and things.
And some clubs are, and athletic activities are far more expensive than others. And I did have that discussion with Mr. Gorski, and he did mention that it's a small percentage, Mr. Gorski, just add to that, a small percentage of the overall budget for some of these things.
If you look at the budget from last year on the district website, or even in the financial report that will be posted soon, and you look at co-curricular activities, which is eleven triple zero four oh two, and athletics, which is eleven triple zero four oh one, and you take the aggregate of those appropriations, compare it to the full general fund, it's a single-digit number in the lower half, like maybe two to three percent of the overall budget. But what the kids get out of those programs is pretty impactful.
But certainly, if they're no longer popular or something, we should do a review and then eliminate them because, you know, it's just prudent to do that and responsible.
Yep. We do have that kind of, like I said, natural ebb and flow, especially in the club piece.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I have a quick question for Katie, but she's running away.
I'm so sorry.
Katie, would you just mind quickly mentioning the teacher's name who came up with that prosthetic idea, because it was an excellent one, and they deserve credit?
Oh, that was Mr. Max Nixon.
Okay. Thank you. It's okay.
I'm leaving you to last, Mr. Tafana.
Yes. All right, and Personnel was originally scheduled on the ninth, and after we got approval from the state and the county, we scheduled Personnel on the twelfth. And the agenda items was the Acting Assistant Principal for the middle school and the Secretary to the CSA, which is on the agenda for tonight. That's it.
The Secretary for the confidential...
CSA, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Tafana?
Sure?
It is your turn.
Okay, the BGNT meeting was on November tenth. First thing on the agenda was the project to develop a multi-sensory room at the Monroe Township Middle School. Administration provided a floor plan schematic which highlighted a storage room located adjacent to the two classrooms in the former boys' team room. These classrooms were constructed as a previous stopgap project. Ms. Chanley spoke to the needs for a multi-sensory room for use by the self-contained population at the Monroe Township Middle School. Administration advised that in order to repurpose the space, that an architect must be engaged to work with administration to develop an educational-specific edspec for the program. The edspec will then guide a necessary schematic design submission to the New Jersey Department of Education. The Committee will recommend proceeding with this project with the architect of record, DI Group Architecture. Second item on the agenda was a project to develop a self-contained classroom at the Monroe Township Middle School. Administration provided a floor plan schematic which highlighted former home economics suite classroom space for potential renovation into a new self-contained classroom. Ms. Chanley spoke to the needs for the self-contained program at the Monroe Township Middle School. The Committee will recommend proceeding with this project with the architect of record, DI Group Architecture.
Any questions for Mr. Tafana?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. You took a pause, I moved right in.
Got to breathe.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda was a cafeteria trailer for Monroe Township Middle School. Administration reviewed a potentially, potential installation location for a cafeteria trailer to be added behind the A Wing wood shop classroom. This placement could likely possibly avoid interference with the parking lot and a student drop-off at the rear of the site. Ms. Chanley spoke to the need for additional cafeteria space at the middle school. Mr. Gorski spoke to the ability to charge cafeteria-related design and construction costs to the Food Service Fund and it not impact the operating budget. The Committee indicated that they would recommend authorizing administration to request proposals from architects to begin a study for this trailer project. Last item on the agenda was Monroe Commons leasing building. Notification of sale, administration provided a copy of the current lease between the Board of Education and the Monroe Commons for three office suites used by pupil personnel services along with notification of sale from the realtor representing the property owners. The current lease expires on May of two thousand and twenty-two and does not have options for a yearly renewal. However, it has not been determined whether or not a change of ownership could change the ability to lease the space. The Committee requested that the administration identify the individual owners of the listed LLC. Following the meeting, administration conferred with their realtor representing the sale and informed who the property owners were. Administration will await direction from the board on pursuing this matter further. And I'm done.
Sorry. Anyone have a question? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ruskey.
So, I have a question with regards to the three proposals for the middle school. Are those things that ever came up before at BGNT? Or these are all brand-new?
These are brand-new.
So, could I just speak respectfully to the optics of this? Because, and I'll do, but, so, let's be clear, this Acting Superintendent Chanley is now seven days on the job, and coincidentally, we have three middle school projects on the BGNT agenda. I'm just talking about optics here. Like, you left the middle school, you're here, you're going to go back to the middle school, and magically, three middle school projects show up like front and center at the BGNT meeting. I just have to call that out and say, is that what's in the best interest of the district? Was this just a coincidence? Or, I guess that's my question. So, that's my point of transparency.
Well, if you want me to answer, I'll answer briefly. That isn't even anything that I would have considered. My thought...
That's what I, well, that's what I thought when I read it.
That's fine. That's, you know, that's what you see. Okay, please, we're not going to have any, you'll have a chance. We have been going back and forth with different options, talking about expansion, you know, the needs of our schools. I think it was just something that was brought up, we sort of agreed with Mr.
The need for the cafeteria at the middle school has pretty much been discussed for years.
Yes.
And, you know, the overcrowding is definitely a cause of that. And as far as I'm concerned, the sensory room benefits everyone.
I'm not against any of the projects, just let that be known. Let that be known. I'm not against any of the projects, per se. I'm just talking about the optics of what is the BGNT meeting.
Well, I mean, you know...
At the first BGNT.
Optics are not what's important. What's important is the needs...
Well, but we pride ourselves on transparency here.
She is now the Acting Superintendent, and she feels that these projects are what we need to be done, so that's why we brought up the BGNT. As far as the need for a cafeteria, I don't know if you've visited the middle school cafeteria. I have. And the amount of kids that go through that room, it's ridiculous. And this is a much-needed project.
Again, I don't doubt the validity of any project.
And I don't see anything, any negative optics in this.
Okay.
This is something that we need. We've been saying it for, since I've been on the board, we've been saying that, so that's three years, and she wasn't super three years ago.
I'm going to have Ms. Chanley speak to it as both the Acting Superintendent and someone who has been in, but it's not something that has never come up. It may be on the agenda tonight for approval or recommendation, but it's not something that has not been spoken about, but...
I could easily speak, and I totally respect Mr. Ruskey, and I, it's a question that would come to mind if I was sitting in your seat. So, I'm completely comfortable with being asked that, and I thank you very much, Madam President, for allowing me to speak on it. Specifically, it's very, it would make a lot of sense why at this time, if I was not sitting in this seat and someone else was sitting in the seat, the issue with the multi-sensory came up when I walked the building over a year ago with Mr. Teague. And this particular area, it was actually a room, because for those of you that may or may not know, we use every available space in the middle school, and we do it quite well. So, we have no unused space. So, there was a room which I was under the impression was a coach's room, I was corrected, and I was told it was storage. What we did was, prior to even, let me back up, prior to even being, to even doing that, we cleaned it out thinking we can make it a small group instruction for our math program, for our math assistance personnel, when we found out very clearly from Mr. Teague, Shari, that is not appropriate, we cannot do that moving forward. If you see a utilization for this room, we have to go to the state and get an appropriate change. Unrelated to me even knowing about this position at the time Dr. Alvik was still here, and it was my understanding she was going to continue, my speech pathologist, my occupational therapist, and my physical therapist came to me and said, we are so excited, there's a grant, we can get all these different materials, and we need a multi-sensory room. And I respectfully said, explain to me what a multi-sensory room is. And they came up with this idea, similar to, I believe, they have one at Brookside, and it has to do with touching and feeling, and perhaps a rocking chair, and so on and so forth. So, I said, oh, I think I have an idea for you, prior to me being in this position. So, I said, I think I have an idea for you, because I cannot utilize this for a small group instruction, but it would be appropriate, perhaps, if we could set it up, because what we did was, when we took all the space, we moved the related service professionals to that area. So, you literally have them in the back of the gym area. So, when I had this opportunity, prior to even getting this position, Mr. Teague and I spoke, and he said, well, Shari, the normal procedure is that you have to go before BGNT. So, I hope that satisfies you that this has, completely unrelated to me being in the acting position. That was the first thing.
But talk about the grant, too.
Oh, and the grant, so they have money to spend, but they can't spend the money to get things that they can't put anywhere. So, I said, hold off, I said, you could start the grant process. This was actually last year, I said, you could start the process, but we're going to need to find out if there's a location that we can utilize. And once we went ahead and moved, we ran out of space upstairs, so we moved the current co-principal out of his office and gave him a conference room that we renovated, and now the conferences take place in the classrooms, because we had no room, so I removed him from his office. He wasn't thrilled at first. And we made that a language lab area for an additional lab teacher, because we were able to get that in the budget, thank you to the board, and we needed it. So, when we did that, it started making me think out of the box about what we could utilize with that space. The next particular space comes completely from this year. Our self-contained programs that we're very proud of have our special niche children, one or two of the particular situations where the children have physical outbursts. Because the room that was originally eleven years ago that I actually designed with Mr. Teague was for our autism class at the time, once we got our multiple disabled class, we split the room in half, and now we have our language disability class, which now took another space. So, when we split the room in half, having the opportunity for when a child has an outburst, to remove them, to put them in an area where they could sit on a beanbag, to put them in an area where they can just decompress, and then there's less consequences, administration doesn't have to be involved, security no longer exists. So, when I had not applied yet, they came to me and said, Shari, take away the computer lab, literally. So, I almost did. And I said, you know what, we have to think out of the box. What can we do? So, Mr. Higgins, the other co-principal, came to me and said, we have that unused space, we have nothing but a stove, washer and dryer, cabinetry, and it's in the back room of a room that we've already renovated in a previous stopgap. That stopgap was, we took the culinary arts, we took away the classroom, made it a resource room, we gave the culinary arts teacher only the kitchens, which we have renovated over the years, and in the front space, we made another resource room. So, we were thinking, we can flip the resource teacher to another regular room and then put the class that currently houses the multiple disabled or the autistic, depending upon where this child is placed, and I believe, I believe he's in the multiple disabled class. If we put it in there, when there's outbursts, he can physically stay within the room with the Paris, we don't need to worry about security, and he can be placed in an area where he can decompress. These incidents, and I agree because what things look like, had nothing to do with me even applying for the acting position or being in this role, came, one came previously the year before, and one came to me only because of the situation at hand, because this child is new to our building. So, we didn't have a need, and the cafeteria stands on itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruskey, would you like Mr. Teague to address that at all?
Absolutely not. That was...
Okay.
More the next plenary. Thank you.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes, just as a member of the BGNT Committee, you know, the committees are all recorded, so I think it would behoove everybody on the board to watch the committees that you're not a part of, just because, thank you, Mrs. Chanley, that's exactly the presentation that you gave at BGNT, so that could have avoided this.
For the record, I did watch it, and I still had the question, because it still had bad optics. But that's okay. But thank you for this suggestion.
Okay. And just, you know, to remind everybody, we did have a referendum fail for a new middle school. So, have we not talked about what we need to do at the middle school? We've been talking about it for the last, I don't know how many years. So, yes, this is moving forward now that we know that we can add an addition on to the middle school. It came up at BGNT that there were actual plans from back in the nineteen nineties for a addition that I know we had asked if we could possibly see those plans that exist. So, yes, in the due diligence of what the BGNT Committee is trying to provide a stopgap measure, because the cafeteria is completely crowded, and Mrs. Chanley explained the reasons why a stopgap would be necessary. And Mr. Gorski also said that it could be taken out of the Food Service Fund, which was an excellent thing to understand, that it would not affect the operating budget.
Let Mr. Polari first, please.
Madam President, and Dr. Chanley, I understand your passion, and I know that you know the facility like, you know, like palm of your hand, so you obviously have it. I looked at the presentation that was made for the budget. There are nine facilities budget appropriation considerations. Seven of them are middle school. There is no Bartley Brook, Brookside, Appogee, it's not even on the radar here. I express the same concern Mr. Ruskey has expressed, that because of the knowledge you have, and I'm not fighting fault with you, because you know the issues there as the principal. Were all the principals given the same opportunity to come and talk about it? So, I know Mr. Ruskey said he doesn't want to hear from Mr. Teague, but as an expert in facilities, he should be the one making a determination of what's needed, not somebody on the board, not somebody who's an administrator, somebody with a degree that knows what the facility needs are. So, I would like to hear from Mr. Teague on, sorry to put you on the spot here, but you are the expert. Does this substantiate your requirements and your needs that you see for the school district?
Good evening again. Yes, so the middle school is next in line. As was mentioned earlier, this board and previous boards have done a stellar job of attending to capital projects in the operating budget, unlike many other districts who have to put forth continual referendums for groups of roofs or boilers or what have you. As Ms. Chanley mentioned, last year, fiscal year, we just completed the project, we did roughly a million dollars' worth of roofing at the middle school.[1792.33] We did roughly a million dollars' worth of roofing at the middle school. The prior roofing project that we had done was at Woodland School. Prior to that, we did Brookside School where we replaced the entire HVC system, boilers, controls, the whole system. Prior to that, we did the roof at Brookside School. We moved, a few years prior to that, we did Barclay Brook School, the 1936 building. We did lead paint remediation, new roofing there with new roofing overlays. So we have systematically been going as systems expire. The middle school equipment that we're looking at, you're talking the Performing Arts Center, which is, I believe, 95, and the A-Wing Edition, which was 97. That equipment has gone beyond its scheduled life. We go by what are known as the ASHRAE standards, which is the American Society for Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning. They have standards for how long equipment is to last. All of us homeowners know you have a water heater and a furnace, eventually they go. You might get 12 years out of your water heater, some houses might get 15 years. We have equipment that is, should have been replaced at 15 years, we're at 20 years. So the middle school is the prominent need at this time. Setting aside Applegarth, because as the board knows, they had looked differently at Applegarth. But following systematically, yes, the middle school is where we need the most monies for the HVC.
I only have one quick question. The line item on the replacement of exterior windows, which is a preventive maintenance for $1.5 million, it's preventive. Compared to the other needs of the school district, is that something that you will encourage?
That is a project that we have proposed many times. Unfortunately, several years ago, I want to say it might have been 2014, when there were rod grants available, we applied for a rod grant at the time, and we actually received a rod grant award for that project. But the board had to make a very difficult decision. Although the state was willing to kick in several hundred thousand dollars towards that project, the board also had to come up with money. I see Mr. Chirolle shaking. He said he recalled that project. So we were able to proceed with that project at that time. That's always been something on my list. Those are the original 1972 windows. The building would be a lot better off if we could put, you know, double painted windows in there.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chirolle.
I just want to remind the board that there were trailers placed at the middle school prior to Ms. Chanley, Mrs. Chanley becoming our acting superintendent. I don't think she engineered that behind the scenes in some grand cabal.
I didn't want that. I wanted a cafeteria.
To influence that, to get to, and we've talked about for years, when, you know, going all the way back, I would think through three different board presidents and a couple different superintendents about the bottleneck at the middle school. So the middle school's been a focus of this board for years. So why, you know, why all of a sudden this is becoming an issue is bothersome to me. And maybe it's something that needs to be taken up with the county superintendent and have him do another investigation and some more meddling.
Okay. That's enough. Yes, Ms. Gierman.
I'd like to say, I'm sorry, Ms. Gierman was next.
Today, I watched a board meeting from November of five years ago, because I'm a ball of fun like that. And touring public forum, Mr. Polari stood at the podium and explained how his child comes home and eats lunch because the child is only given two minutes sometimes if they're the last in rotation at the middle school to have lunch. And that was five years ago.
The cafeteria is definitely an issue.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add something.
Then we'll move to.
I'd just like to add something. So basically, we have a big issue at the middle school. The fact that we prioritize the middle school over other schools is irrelevant. We need to solve whatever issue is brought to us by Ms. Chanley now that she's the acting superintendent. And that's what the BGNT committee tried to do. She came to us with a big issue. That being said, we also discussed that although Jerry Teague, of course, is excellent at his job and he knows what the facilities need, there is no better to tell us what these facilities need than the people who are administrators in the building. They can tell us what rooms need to be turned into what to give their students the best chance for education, and we need to include them more in those decisions. Again, not that Jerry's not qualified to do it, but Jerry's not in there and seeing firsthand what room could be utilized for what. So that is the reason why I'm proud that Ms. Chanley came forward and told us this is what she really needs done for her school and we can address those issues. That is what needs to be done with all the schools. Those administrators need to come forward, maybe attend BGNT meetings, or send an email and say, "This is what I would like in my school. Can we somehow fit it in?" And let's start listening to the administrators. That's just my opinion.
And real quick, Michelle, just to clarify though, not to say that the middle school is taking priority over anything. We are awaiting a detailed study from SSP for Applegarth. So I don't want it to be that the board is no longer looking into Applegarth. We've abandoned that for the middle school. That is not true. Applegarth is a big consideration of BGNT and we are awaiting that report that's supposed to be coming in December.
I think we can agree that all of our facilities are in need of something based on our enrollment. Now, some buildings and schools don't need as much in terms of enrollment, but across the board, because of the way our enrollment is increasing and even periodically every other year, I think we can agree that there are priorities in every school and we're going to try to address them as best we can. Again, we've had two referendums fail and we are trying really, really to address these things, to be aware of them and to try to get each and every one of them satisfied for our kids. I think we should move on. Anybody else? Okay. Let's open this to the public. I would like the public to know that we have a new system. Our technology system, our technology staff, and I believe Mr. Gorski worked this out. You can see there's a monitor in front of you. That's going to be the time. And I think we are going to give a, Mr. Gorski, a notice after how much, when the speaker has, how much left?
Mr. Feldman gave me a presentation of this the other day. It counts down. And as is the policy, it'll stop when administration of the board is answering the speaker. It'll start again when we stop. And I believe somewhere around 20 seconds, 30 seconds, it'll turn a different color and then it'll start beeping when it's up. And I believe, Ms. Arminio, you said you wanted to hold strictly to when it's up, it's up.
We are really going to have to hold this strictly. It's 9:30. We are trying to do as best as we can with our business. We want to give the public a chance to speak, but we are going to ask the public to be responsible to everyone else in the room, including us volunteers here and our staff. And at four minutes, please let the next person speak. So.
Who's controlling it? Excellent.
Yeah. So it's out of the board's hands. There's no optics on that. You know, we're going to move fairly and everybody's going to be able to see the four minutes. Go ahead. So can I just have a voice vote approval to go into public session, into public forum? Okay, thank you. Please come up. And again, last month, I asked if you are going to speak, try to stand in line, at least one or two people, so we don't have to wait for you to walk up. Again, we're trying to make everything efficient. Yes, please. Your name, address, and then certainly begin.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. Mrs. Chanley, on behalf of CPAG, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, we welcome you. We look forward to partnering with you, just as we did with Dr. Alvik and Mr. Goodall. I also want to say a special thank you to Dr. Lehman because he has worked diligently and very collaborative with us, and we really appreciate that. And I just want to say, optics are not, on behalf of CPAG, thank you for giving equity to special needs students by putting these items that are absolutely necessary on the agenda. The middle school programs need improvement. We have a lot of students aging into those programs and sensory rooms have been documented to really help academically and socially all of our students. So thank you for that and welcome.
Thank you. Next.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Mike Weiner, 9 Sequoia Court. First, I have a question. Can I get a show of hands from the board members of how many people have children or have had children in the Falcon Care services?
We actually don't. We work as a full board, sir. Okay, you can stop the clock. We work as a full board and we really don't engage with, you know, during the public forum. If we have to answer your question, but individually, we're not going to answer those things.
Okay, fair enough. So during the budget presentation, there was a lot of talk about Falcon Care and, you know, obviously the money that it raises for the district. I actually came here tonight to speak about Falcon Care and some concerns I have regarding the program. In August of 2018, my wife and I first moved here with our two daughters and my one daughter was entering kindergarten. Since we were shockingly one of the few districts that don't offer full day kindergarten, we wanted to sign up for the ECE program. And we found out that it was full, right? This was in late August. We'd also be using the Before Care program, but like I said, when we inquired about the ECE program, we found out that it was filled up and there weren't any additional spots because of constraints of physical space and the building occupancy where the program was based. So this forced us to scramble around, find a local daycare that could not only enroll my daughter for a half day, but could also transport her to her PM kindergarten class. So, you know, you can imagine the pressure we were under moving into a new house and then finding out that, you know, what we thought was a solid school situation was actually not solid at all. But luckily, we had some serious issues along the way, including the daycare canceling the busing service. But we were able to patch things together for the year. So this previous September, when my younger daughter started kindergarten, being that we were aware of these issues, we enrolled early for the programs we needed. She currently attends Before Care and kindergarten at Mill Lake and ECE. The more recent issues that I have arose when on the first day of school, there was, and I wish I had time to get into specifics here, but I don't, but Mrs. Arminio has my email if any of you want to reach out to me and hear it. There were several miscommunications and procedural errors that ended up with my daughter being lost on her first day of school, okay? Being misplaced on her first day of school. A member of the staff of Falcon Care actually called my wife and asked my wife if our daughter was with my wife while my daughter was here at the school. Okay? I'm sure you can all imagine how concerning this was to us. She missed her first day of kindergarten, spent the whole day in ECE. My wife and I followed up with several people, followed up with our former superintendent, followed up with the director of Falcon Care, who I know is leaving, followed up with the principal of Mill Lake. And to be honest, while there were some absolute failures of simple procedure in this instance, I understand that mistakes happen. So this incident did spur me to look into things a little bit further and I came to find some things out and let me know if I'm wrong about any of this. The Falcon Care program was taken over a couple of years ago by our school district and it generates about $400,000, I heard $600,000 tonight, in revenue for our school district. This is an important fact to me, given the rest of what I'm going to say. The teachers that make up Falcon Care, the staff, they're not offered tenure positions, they're not paid on the same salary guide as the MTAA, and they're not offered membership in the union. There's been a substitute teacher in the ECE program that my daughter's in that we pay serious money for since day one and none of the parents were notified. I found that out on my own. I contacted other parents. I contacted the superintendent and the principal and asked them, "Send out notifications to the parents, let them know they're substitute." No word. Right? All of this is unacceptable. There were also struggles to find a full-time teacher, you know, and I wonder if that has something to do with the terrible compensation package that we've decided to offer these employees who work in this Falcon Care program. So to sum up, the program makes the school district $600,000 a year and it seems like it's being used as a slush fund when I hear people talk about it. And it doesn't seem like the parents, the parents that use it are getting the services they deserve. You know, for that kind of money, we should be investing back in this program, you know, if we're making that kind of money off of it. I also attend the Before Care program.
Okay.
Okay. No problem.
We will address that, sir, and could you?
I'll be back next month. Don't worry.
Well, I will invite you to, and if you'll give me permission, I will send your emails to Ms. Chanley and maybe she can contact you if that's acceptable. Okay, next.
Good evening. Douglas Way, 4 Tamarack Road. There's a couple of items under the superintendent's report, items O and P, which references sidebar agreements with the Monroe Teachers Education Association. But it doesn't really indicate what the nature of those sidebar agreements are. I think it would be in the interest of the public that that be divulged. Also, you have approved a contract for Ms. Chanley to serve as the acting superintendent, but there was no mention of her salary. I think the public should be apprised of that if that salary has been settled on. And I do want to commend, even though you've already done this, but I do want to commend our business office for, once again, once again, many years in a row, once again, achieving an audit with no modifications, no recommendations whatsoever. I know some of you from comments that I heard earlier in the year as well as last year, you were probably expecting that there would be some kind of recommendations. There never had been recommendations in the past. There were not recommendations this time, which clearly shows that our business department, our business administrator and his staff are doing an outstanding job of watching our dimes and nickels and pennies. So I thank Mr. Gorski and his staff for that. One other comment is, and it strikes me, you know I was on the board at one time and I've attended many board meetings or watched with on video. And it strikes me that in your effort to come up with a referendum that will satisfy the taxpayers of the community, you may be failing our students. Our students need more facilities, more physical space. They need it at Applegarth, they need it at the middle school, and they certainly need it at the high school. And it seems that you're taking a very piecemeal approach to how you're going to meet those needs. I really think, and maybe this is your plan, but it is obvious to me, but I really think you need to put together a comprehensive referendum that will solve all of these needs that we have for physical facilities. And there is a way to get that accomplished. I've checked the New Jersey Administrative Code in terms of school facilities. And I'm sure Mr. Gorski and Mr. Teague know about this, but there is a way that even when a referendum is rejected, there is a way to move forward and get the facilities that the district needs built. And I'm not saying in grand scheme. I'm simply saying, determine what this district needs for all of its buildings, for all of its students. Put that together in a referendum. You can move forward from there. Don't be afraid that the price tag is going to be high. Of course it's going to be high. We're a big district. We have those needs. You're failing the needs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would just like to point out that Ms. Chanley, now that it has been approved, Ms. Chanley's contract is available for the public. It is, contracts are open to the public under the Open Public Records Act. We can, you can Oprah them, which is the Open Public Records Act, and ask for a copy of the contracts. They are available in the district office. All contracts are, once they're approved, the contracts are. Ms. Chanley was, may I?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Chanley, as a longtime staff member in, as a principal, her salary was approximately $177. Her salary as of this is $195. And all of the benefits and everything that went along with her previous position are intact. So there is nothing that is new from there, except, Mr. Bosch, you told us one.
It was a minor matter regarding taking a vacation.
Okay, well, that's what's different.
Right.
Like I said, I wanted to be clear as to what we were presenting to the public.
No formal additional vacation days were added though.
Okay. All right. Right.
It was a utilization provision.
Okay, a utilization provision of vacation days.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, next, please. Name and address.
Good evening, everybody. Pradeep Malam, 4 J Place. First of all, congratulations to Ms. Chanley is in order. And I wish her good luck for her field task. And I see a lot of, some of the MTMS teachers are on retirees list and the board is, I don't know whether they voted or not, I can leave. But I want to mention, special congratulations to Ms. Pye, the MTMS math teacher. And she's a very excellent teacher and she's more proponent to, not just classroom mathematics, And she's a very excellent teacher, and she's more proponent to, not just classroom mathematics, she's more proponent to more of the mathematic computations, AMC 9, AMC 7, and all those things. So while we are on the topic of AMC, this year, the MTHS cannot conduct AMC computation, our MTHS, but all the surrounding schools have conducted the computation on the specific date. Why? Because we did not receive the question papers in time. Last year, the AIME, the second level of AMC computation, did not happen in our high school, and a couple of students have lost their opportunity. And this year, the whole batch has lost their opportunity because the AMC computation question papers are not arrived in time. We don't just budget the money, we need to have some operational, I've not been pointing one particular teacher or one particular club or anything, but we have to tighten up our operations around these things, because whoever wants to be, go into the major mathematics or statistics, these credentials, even calculating into that one, will give some credentials and will give something. That's it. So second thing, congratulations to business team for their successful audit. I don't understand one particular concept, how it can be that clean audit. I see one particular line item around $220K that is fraudulent all the way from appropriations to the expenditure. It's iPad fee collected from the parents in 2020 and 2021. I was charged $85 for that, and the line item is around $220K. And it was proposed and appropriated in the budget by this same BA that he knows that it is against the board policy and regulation, where the regulation says you cannot go beyond $49. Second thing, and the purpose of the money that is collected is not utilized in the same way. It clearly in the email, it's mentioned that the annual production plan payment, I, in the last meeting also, I asked like, how much of this $220K went to the actual payment for production plan? I did not get the answer yet. And somebody said, somebody will get back in the email, but I did not get that email or I did not get that answer. I'm still waiting for that answer. And where that money went, we don't know. It went into general budget and it is used. So can I get some answers?
Okay, stop the clock. I am going to-
Do you want to talk about it or have Mr. Gorski talk about it?
Regarding the iPad or?
Yeah. I did ask the auditor about the iPads and the iPads that we purchased, because they weren't purchased in this budget that they went, because the budget ended, the budget that they're auditing now is from June 30th of 2021 and before. So they, she wasn't going to answer a question that wasn't in that budget, but I take your point that there is a line item in the current budget that that information has not been answered.
I'm still talking about 2020 and 21.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
But, okay, so-
For that school year, I was charged $85. And that iPad already had Apple Care production. But why I was charged and what the money was spent, I did not know.
Okay.
It went into a black hole.
Okay. Mr. Gorski, do you want to just speak to that a little bit?
Yes.
For clarification?
Yes, thank you. The money certainly didn't go in a black hole. The money is reserved and it was audited by the auditors. The intention of the board when they established the fee structure years ago was not only to provide for insurance, which has changed over the years. Now there's not an additional Apple Care insurance fee, it's included in every price per unit cost, but the monies collected from parents was also going to the sustainability of the one-to-one initiative, so that when we do a refresh, it contributes to the new lease amount, and it also provides for new units that are unexpectedly damaged and broken and have to be completely replaced, not just repaired, and also many units that are purchased during the year for student enrollment growth. It's not uncommon for a purchase order to come over at any time for 50 to 200 units that are all of a sudden short.
But I think the question was the way we calculated the expense to the parents and also what we called it. I think that's where we had the question.
Over time, like I said, there was a change in the program. The insurance fee is no longer applicable, it got waived into the per unit cost, causing the new price of the unit to go up, requiring some additional monies from the board. And the money is going to be contributed toward the first lease payment on the refresh. There will not be a lot of money, the board changed the policy on this, and less money is being collected now, and I expect that any account-
No, we are talking 2020 and 2021, not this year.
2021, it's sitting in a reserve account specifically segregated for the one-to-one initiative for new units, for replacement units, and for increased enrollment.
Okay.
The last point, the comprehensive financial report, it is not comprehensive at all. It doesn't contain how much we owe to anybody and how much money were owed to us. It is not there. Just because a couple of BAs are agreed upon like those two school districts, just they are not publicizing it. Every time we ask a question, it will take one month for the business office to respond how much they owe us till now. Why can't they put that out in public? All the funds, all the bills payable, accounts payable, bills receivable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Zeez, 3 Lonsdale Drive. First, I would like to congratulate our business office on achieving their 22nd perfect audit with the new audit team that included both CPAs and also a certified fraud examiner. As a fellow CPA and former auditor myself, I can appreciate the tremendous level of skill and effort it takes to prepare the comprehensive annual financial report. It is a complex document, nearly 200 pages long, that includes an incredible breadth and depth of financial information. For our business office to get every number right, every chart, every disclosure in it is indeed a great accomplishment, so congratulations. I also want to talk about our school overcrowding problem. Our overcrowding problem is our most pressing crisis, but we cannot properly address this crisis unless we understand its scope. And we cannot understand its scope unless we have an updated demographers report. The administration recommended hiring a demographer back in January, and the SSP architects that we hired recommended that we hire a demographer multiple times over the summer. And now it is November and we still haven't hired one. Without an updated demographers report, the district is trying to solve a problem blindfolded. We not only have an overcrowding problem, we have an aging facility that needs replacement. At the January BGNT meeting, Mr. Tofano agreed that the condition of Apple Garth School was so poor that spending money on renovating it would be akin to quote-unquote throwing money in a hole. And the committee agreed to replace it with a larger school and move the sixth grade out into the upper elementary schools to alleviate the overcrowding of the middle school. And, you know, when the price tag for the new school came in at $84 million, the board seemed to drop the idea of building a new school. However, the most recent BGNT meeting, both Mr. Tofano and Ms. Arminio agreed that even if we were to make additions onto the middle school, we still would need a new school. And if the school would cost $84 million now, then next year it would cost $90 million or maybe $100 million in a few years. So we're not saving taxpayers any money by delaying the inevitable. Construction costs will rise and interest rates are also projected to rise, and this delay will intensify the burden on taxpayers and result in dangerously overcrowded schools and very much negatively impact the children. My question is, when will the board hire a demographer to move this referendum process forward? Because whether we renovate or we build a new school, we're going to need a referendum because there's no way we could fit all of it into the budget.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I can speak to a few things if you want to. Okay. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to speak to a few of the things that you stated. So when we're looking at the overall, you're absolutely right, everybody is affected, everybody has a need. So I believe, and someone will correct me if I misspeak, I believe that what they're doing now is they're not making the statement, no one has made any decisions on whether or not Apple Garth will be replaced or added on to or replaced and in the areas needed and added on to. So I believe that the board did approve a resolution, and I'll be corrected if I use the wrong terminology because I'm new at this, a resolution to move forward to do an exhaustive examination of Apple Garth, which will then heed the information, you are 100% correct, to be able to move forward. So they are doing something.
But the demographer, the demographer-
Oh, I'm going to speak on that.
The demographers are most concerned about.
Yes, I'm going to speak on that as well.
Okay.
So no matter what, Apple Garth, and I was the principal of that building as well, so I know what they're up against, that building is being looked at in detail, I believe Mr. Teague is there almost on a daily basis to see what's going on as far as that situation. The demographers conversation that we began to have, and we're going to move forward at the next board meeting, because we did have the conversation, we are looking to examine whether or not it will be an updated demographers report, which is appropriate, or a brand-new demographers report. The difference would be, the updated demographer would be utilizing the previous company to then update the numbers as appropriate, or a brand-new company to look at a demographers report. We also know that with the decision that was made with the additional housing that was put into place on one side of 33, the affordable housing, I always say Mount Laurel, but I have to correct myself because I believe it's beyond that. So the demographers report, you are 100% correct. And as far as the middle school, what we did was, we wanted to look, we don't want to take a problem and move it somewhere else. So when we had our meetings with the elementary schools, because we want to talk about crowding there, we want to see if it's appropriate to add on to the middle school so that we then take the problem that's there and create a solution for the existing problem and not create a problem in the elementary schools by moving the sixth grade into the elementary buildings, which would then cause a need for their schools to be overcrowded and then to have to add on to them. So everything you said is 100% correct, and I've only been here for a couple of days. So what we're doing is we're moving forward with everything that you mentioned, and we are making decisions on all of the things that you mentioned because you're absolutely correct.
All right, and I would also like to commend the effort to renovate the rooms in the middle school to accommodate the special needs students. I can attest to the benefits of sensory rooms and things like that for special needs students. As an aside, I would also agree with the gentleman's earlier remarks about Falcon Care and ECE. I think there could be improvements in those programs, and certainly the revenues generated from those programs, I mean, it's unfortunate that those revenues have to pay for trailers and other things rather than the kindergartners who are attending those programs. So I do want to make those additional points as well, and I hope to see a demographer on the next agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I will ask for a voice vote on closing the public portion, will favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman, would you care to begin?
Absolutely. And I will keep my remarks brief. It's a quick update, there's a lot of good things going on in the district, you've heard from our students already. But I wanted to start by congratulating all of our fall athletes, all of our coaches, all the parents, anyone associated with our fall teams. We had a really nice year this year. The athletes, you know, despite, we're still dealing with COVID, so we have all these kind of non-traditional, non-normal things going on, and we persevered through that, and the teams did really well. So congratulations to everyone involved in our athletic program. And then we're coming off of Veterans Day, so I wanted to share an update from our Patriot Warrior Club. So they did a fundraiser at the high school. The club designed and sold shirts to donate funds to local veterans in the Monroe-Jamesburg community. Staff and students wore their shirts this past Wednesday, November 10th. All veterans that worked in the high school were gifted shirts on behalf of the club as a display of appreciation for their service. So I want to just highlight that one particular club as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman.
Ms. Chanley, okay. So I want to start off by saying thank you again for this opportunity. In my acting role as superintendent, I will do my very best to listen to everyone and to move forward with the board, to work as a team, to see what we can do to get things started around here. So I want to thank you very much. Before I go ahead and ask for a roll call of approval, I want to just comment, Ms. Lori Pike, Ms. Denise Hane, I will just start with them, two very valuable teachers in our district. I've had the pleasure of working with both of those teachers. One, Ms. Lori Pike, who was my teacher back at Apple Garth, then went back to the elementary school as an accelerated teacher, and then she returned to me 11 years ago. I wish her all the best on her retirement. Ms. Denise Hane, I believe if I am correct, came from Woodland, and then she became one of mine when we went ahead and did the, I'll call it redistricting, when we put the sixth grade in the middle school, and she's retiring, I both wish them both happy journeys. And we also have a retirement of our, one of our bus drivers, and we know what a difficult job that is. I couldn't imagine, everybody says I wouldn't want to be a middle school principal, I wouldn't want to be a bus driver. So I wish Ms. Ellen Kohler all the best in her future journey, and this time maybe someone will drive her. So at this time, I'd like to ask, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through AL by consent roll call.
Mr. Chiarella and seconded by?
Me.
Peter.
Peter, okay. Any questions? Ms. Beerman.
Just not back on personnel, but enrollment, and I still don't know why it can't just be included on here so I don't have to ask every month, but-
Get closer to your mic, we can't hear you.
We verbally get the Jamesburg High School number during this report, we need to continue to do that or please include it in the enrollment numbers, do we have that?
Have we had that number yet, Mr. Gorski?
I think by, in the middle of October, we were supposed to get those numbers.
We're talking about for right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's about 265.
The monthly number.
And by the way, it doesn't really change, it's about 265 every day.
I looked it up in Genesis today, 262.
Okay.
It changes slightly in a-
Yep, there's an ebb and flow a little-
The number monthly. If we could include it in the enrollment numbers and not have resistance to that.
It's always going to be right there.
Okay.
So we could put it in writing within the parameters of the other enrollment.
That would be great.
Thank you. We could just add that, and it could be continued.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam President, I have a comment and a question. Having been a parent of a marching band, it's been the same volunteers who lug all the stuff around. I think, you know, somehow we need to get more people to move the equipment around. But that's what I'm getting to. I forgot what I was going to ask you, but, yes, I know what I was going to ask. I looked at the agenda items that you have here, I know that there is a trip that they're planning to go, is that one of the things, because I don't see it, but I was told it was? Okay, no?
That's not on this.
Good.
If you're thinking about an international trip?
Yes.
No, no, that has not been, that has not moved forward.
Because somebody told me it's going to be on the agenda, in which case I can't move, that's why I checked, okay.
Nope, not yet. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Skirby.
Just a quick question, I know it's come up sometimes in public forum. According to the policy with the sending, you know, sending district, could we have a breakdown during the vote of what Mr. Rutske is voting on that pertains to with the high school?
Yes, we're going to have, we're going to talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Continue, anyone else? Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Palori.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Board action items A through AL, A through AL passes unanimously.
Okay, you have more?
Yes, I do. But I want to also just welcome to the administrative staff, Ms. Christy Francis, I do want to call her Zimmerman, and she's waving in the back. She's one of our established fabulous teachers at the middle school, and I want to just say welcome, and I wish you all the best of luck in your acting role as assistant principal at the middle school. So thank you very much. It is recommended that the board approve board actions A through P under consent roll call.
Okay, Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Tofano, any questions?
Oh, I apologize.
Stick around, we haven't voted on that yet.
No, she was on, no.
No, she was on personnel.
No, she was, I double-checked, she was on personnel.
Yes, on now, A through?
No, no, no. We're on board action now, we just did personnel. I was right.
All right, go ahead, sorry, my mistake.
Nope, that's okay.
You can go now. Congratulations. I just want to keep it right. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I already did it except for that.
I think we're up to any questions, comments on board action items A through P.
Mr. Rutske.
Question on letter P, if I may, and I don't expect you to have a running tally at this point in time, but I'd be very curious-
I do.
-of what we're spending on virtual instruction.
I do have a running tally.
On P?
Yes, we do.
Because it's got to be adding up.
So this was a question that I asked Mr. Gorski if he could prepare, so I want to thank Mr. Gorski for preparing these numbers. And it's very unusual to say this, I don't even have to look because I've already read it. So for this year from July through November currently, we spent approximately $70,000. What's unusual about that, or usual, is that during the COVID year, same timeframe exactly, take the same, so compare apples to apples, we spent approximately $30,000. Go back the year before COVID, this time exactly, within hundreds of dollars of the $70,000.
Really?
So the cost is almost identical. And I found it very unusual, but numbers are numbers. So I do have that.
Excellent, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? No. Going once, going twice? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Pelori.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Board Action Items A through P has passed unanimously.
Okay. Okay.
And Ms. Shanley, if that concludes your reports.
Yes, if, with Madam President's permission?
Yes, go ahead.
I do have one additional recommendation that I'd like to make in light of the conversations that we've been having and looking at the needs and looking at the growth and being part of the VGNT, and I was invited as a principal previously, and then remaining here as the acting superintendent, I think it is prudent and respectful in working with Mr. Tag that we, I ask that we put forth a resolution so that we make a commitment so that we can move forward in what we need to do. So it is the recommendation of the administration that the board put forth a resolution to commit to the middle school facilities remaining as a sixth through eighth grade student configuration to explore options to accommodate the entire population of housed and unhoused students.
Any motion?
I think.
Okay. I would like to bring that up just for a quick discussion, and I would like to ask Dr. Lehman, being, you know, Assistant Superintendent, to address that as well.
I think it's a prudent decision. I think instructionally, we know it's an effective layout. We currently have a sixth to eighth grade middle school, it's a common, you know, you look around, most middle schools are six to eight, some are seven to eight, I mean, depends, but we certainly need to do our due diligence in terms of taking a look at all the options, and I think this is just another option to take a look at. So we know we have a lot of unhoused students. How many can we fit there? Can we fit them all there? What does it look like? We know instructionally it's fine, can we fit them all in that one location? We've got to take a look. If we're going to do our due diligence, it's time to do our due diligence, so.
And before I ask for any other questions, I think we had discussed that, well, you know, I'll let Karen go first and then I'll.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So what we're being asked to do is only package the middle school as being a six to eight as we look for what are the options to take care of expansions or housing or whatever, not put that extra variable in there of what if we pull the sixth grade out?
Correct.
What if we bring the ninth grade over?
Okay. And that's where I was going as well. I believe that Mr. Tag has also talked to you about it and thought that if we have this resolution or a resolution deciding which way to go, then we could actually move forward and get construction, you know, construction information and actually drill down and get this done.
So if I could expand?
Yes, please.
So Mr. Tag is always very, very upright, very, very, he's very specific. He does not make any recommendations, he is not an educator, he is a director of facilities, a fantastic one, but he always says that he will provide information and then he feels that the administrative professionals need to make the decision. So I am putting forth, and I did discuss this with Dr. Lehman, so that we were on the same page. I do agree, in order for us to start making decisions, we have to make this decision first. If it's not the decision of the board, I respect that, but we have to make a decision because every time we have the conversation, and there was at one time, you're absolutely right, Ms. Bierman, a conversation about ninth grade being removed, every time we have these different conversations, it's around Robin. We don't move forward. So we need to make a decision to feel to the best of our ability, and by doing this, it allows contracts, proposals to be brought to us to say, if you were to keep sixth grade there, we have unhoused students, housed students, or unhoused students, let's say, I'm just going to come out, 700 unhoused students, 500 unhoused students, what it looks like, what are the abilities, we do have water and sewer in the back, what does that mean? We can't move forward to do our due diligence and to show the respect to the public to make a decision until we make a decision academically first now. So that was why I put forth this recommendation in collaboration with Dr. Lehman.
And one more question to Dr. Lehman, if I might. Dr. Lehman, you had mentioned in terms of curriculum and education that there were pros and cons to both ways, and both ways have been in different schools for different reasons, right?
Correct.
So there's not really a wrong decision at this point, in your opinion?
I mean, there's certainly challenges to undo where we are, right? Because we have certification issues and things that we have to work through, so that going to a sixth grade in another building, the opportunities they would have, we would certainly have to tweak and change and reevaluate, but it can be done, you know, everything can be done. Where I'm coming from is, I think we know instructionally it works, six to eight, we could make it work, sixth grade in another building, whether they're alone, or they're a five-six building, or they're in with a K-5 building, you know, K to six. I guess my perspective is, if the goal is going to be to keep six, eight together, can we do it on that site? And if we can't, then we got to come back to the decision to say, if we can't do it on that site, do we need to look at another location for a six to eight building? Or do we then have the conversation about pulling grade six out? I think this decision would allow us to get to that point to kind of move ahead.
But I meant educationally and instructionally, it's a sound position to that.
Yeah, and six to eight is a very common layout.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
Shall we have a roll call, please? Do you want to read that again?
I'd be happy to. It is the recommendation of the administration that the board put forth a resolution to commit to the middle school facilities remaining as a sixth through eighth grade student configuration to explore options to accommodate the entire population of housed and unhoused students.
Okay.
Madam President, a quick question. So when you explore the options, you're talking about instructional as well as logistical, correct?
Correct.
Traffic circulation?
Absolutely.
Availability of the sewer system or everything?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second, so should we have a roll?
Yes, motion moved by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Ms. Skirby. Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Mr. Pelori.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Sure.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Sure, yes, it's a yes. Sure means yes, in my vocab, but that's okay.
We'll skip Mr. Chiarella in case he comes back.
I think we can pass it without his.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
And we'll record Mr. Chiarella's absence for this motion. Motion passes.
Okay. Is that it?
Thank you very much.
I believe, Mr. Gorski, you are next, sir.
Thank you. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through L be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Pelori.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tofano. Any questions? Anything?
Just of note, there is three resolutions on there that were recommended by Ms. Shanley, and those are incorporated in my BA report.
JKL.
JKL, thank you.
Any questions? Anyone?
I'd say not a question, but I always like to acknowledge donations, so letter G, so from Staples, I don't, whatever the school supplies are, it's just always a thank you, should always go out for any, anything that people do to help our district.
Do we send a phone back?
We will. I also want to point out that the ICE rental agreement is a five-year agreement. We are in the, I think, it's ending on 2023, but Mr. Gorski reminds me that we have to approve it annually.
Yes, Madam President.
Okay.
And the reason for that, for everybody's understanding, is although you have a five-year proposal and price agreement from the vendor, and although it was initially approved in year one that way, there's still a statutory requirement for the board to appropriate enough funds to continue that lease, so it has to be put on the agenda every year.
And H, the swim club agreement, Ms. Bierman, I think you spoke to that about the cost of a club turning into, the cost, and this is an example of that. I think it was a swim club last year, and we are appropriating funds for that to go forward. Okay? Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Tofano for giving me a call today and reminding me about JKL, to make sure that was incorporated in the agenda. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes, on everything. I'm going to recuse myself on H.
So noted. Mr. Pelori.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be very brief with my report. I do want to address some things that have come up from the public. A few, I don't know if it was in September or October, I didn't have time to go back and look at exactly what I might have said, but I believe it, the seed of my comment was based on our concerns about really finding out in each building what the expansion and what the enrollment needs are. And I think I mentioned something about having the principals or the administrators come to the board and answer questions. I was questioned about that. It was merely a suggestion, it was not a directive, it was not put in writing, it was not made to be a formal decree or request. Apparently, it was taken out of context a little bit, and I was, there was some question about the ethics of that statement and whether or not that was micromanaging. The genesis of that, again, I believe, was in a committee meeting where I think that the board members should be free to throw around some different ideas, some different suggestions, some thought processes, without it being something, you know, critical. So I would encourage that the board members always have those kinds of discussions. If they become something that we cannot put into action, you know, I don't mind being corrected, not something, in any way, the intention was merely not to micromanage, but like Mr. Tofano said earlier, get an idea of what the people really need in their buildings. Because we have been struggling for years about enrollment, about facilities needs, and when we, we don't want to have one monopoly of thought. The people who are on the, you know, with their boots on the ground, as the expression goes, they know what's going on. Why wouldn't we want to ask our building managers to give us some ideas in conjunction with Mr. Tag and the rest of the administration? Whether or not they should come to the meeting and be questioned, I get that, that that would be inappropriate. So again, I don't mind being corrected, but I think that we should be able to have free discussion and keep our ideas flowing rather than not saying anything, and again, going around and around and not getting anything accomplished. So that's my report, just that I feel that the purpose of that was merely, just a question. Go ahead, Mr. Chiarella.
I think, and I may have misheard the classes at the School Board Association meetings that we had, the courses that we took, but there are districts that do things differently from that standpoint, because the, having the committee meetings broadcast or telecast the way we do them, although we're all for transparency and openness, also has a stifling effect.
That's right.
Where board members are afraid to speak, because then you have members of the public who twist it or misconstrue it, aren't there to clarify it, and then they take it and they run with it, and that has, that, those conversations have no bearing on what the final outcome is, because we're a board of a whole, and those items would have to be discussed here and then voted upon here. So although I'm not saying that we need to close those down, I think that what we should do is look at what our surrounding districts are doing and other districts in New Jersey are doing, and maybe not go above and beyond, because maybe we have, you know, maybe we're not, maybe we're not able to handle that as a district.
Well, I'm going to stop you there since this is my board president's report. I thank you for that, however, I think we have evolved into a higher standard, and I think we should continue that. I am not afraid to be corrected, so I wanted to put that out to the public, but I think we should all be very courageous and have free discussions. And if we make a mistake in our statement, and we are called out on the public, which is their right, then we could move in the direction of doing the right thing. That's all. So that's my board report. Thank you for listening. Any other board business?
Ms. Shaw?
Yes, Ms. Belko.
I have two items. One, I want to, Ken kind of stole my thunder there, but I just wanted to thank the administration and the board for the opportunity to attend the New Jersey School Board Association Conference at the end of October. It was a little tough to get it in with my work, my work has been very busy, but I was able to attend quite a few of the webinars and the items and learned a lot, learned a lot about how committees are structured in other districts, how, I learned a lot about ethics, there was a couple of ethics webinars, and also some stuff about curriculum, and particularly different things to do with special ed. So Dr. Lehman expects some phone calls from me to discuss what I learned and how we can move forward in the district with that. And speaking of special needs, I want to say that I had an unbelievable experience this past weekend down in Asbury Park with our Unified Students and Teachers and paras at the Special Olympics New Jersey Splash and Dash, and myself and a couple of teachers and a bunch of students who were much younger than I, who could handle the cold weather, ran into the ocean, it's 59 degrees when it was only 63 degrees outside, and we had a blast, and it was incredible. The best part about it was, is that Monroe Township High School and the school's portion of the fundraising for this came out the top fundraiser for this event. We raised over $14,000, and 50% of that money will go to our Unified Programs so that we will have some additional funds for our Unified Programs to do some of the things and be able to continue some of the great things that our Unified Programs do. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Mascali, who is one of the phys ed teachers here at the high school, Ms. Dillon, there were a few other high school paras, I don't remember their names and I apologize for that, but there was a lot of camaraderie. We had some alumni come and join us, and honestly, it was a blast, and I can't wait to do it next year. It was really a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, did you jump in or you didn't jump in?
I ran right in the water with everybody. The energy of all those people holding hands and running into the water, and my daughter also ran in, my 19-year-old Top Program daughter, Caitlin, who's Student of the Month, had to get that in, right? to get that in right, who, she ran in with me as well, and it was fabulous, and it was, actually, she wouldn't run with me. She's a typical teenager, she would not run with me, she would only stay with her friends. So that's what she did.
Ms. Tofano?
It was a great, so I just want to say, these are the kinds of things we participate in, and as a board member, I'm proud to share that here with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Belko. Ms. Tofano, then Mr. Plori.
I'd like to make a motion, but first, I would appreciate if the board attorney would answer two questions of mine. Sir, how many years have you been in the education business? Board attorney, how long have you been doing this?
Thirty-seven years.
How many?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years.
I'm not even 37 years old yet.
In 37 years, have you ever seen a, have you ever witnessed a superintendent's contract to be rejected?
It's a very broad question, but the answer is yes, but not rejected in the manner that recently happened.
Okay.
I've seen contracts rejected for compensation issues.
Okay.
And that's really the only time I've seen a contract.
So that's the reason for my motion. I'd like to make a motion that a full investigation be conducted in order to find out if any board members or board member interfered with the contract, but putting forth Mrs. Chanley's contract.
Wait a minute, is that, is that something that would be appropriate for us?
It's an appropriate motion.
I'd like to give your advice on that.
It would be something I would discuss in closed session, not on the public record. I'd be too constrained with my remarks.
Well, there is a motion.
There are pros and there are cons that I would recommend the board consider before it take up the issue, though I would not want to suppress the issue.
Okay, nor would I. You have, so we have a motion. You're seconding it? Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question as to who will conduct the investigation.
I guess that's for the board to decide.
Any other?
I think at a minimum, we should know, is that a motion that this board can implement and actually investigate? Is that possible?
No, I don't, are you asking the board to investigate? I don't think so. I think that would be.
I think the board has to decide who can do the investigation, yes.
We had an investigation before on confidentiality. We'll have the law firm investigate it.
Anyone else?
How much is that going to cost? I mean, listen, everything has a price tag.
We had a BS investigation before.
All right. Let's not go there. Let, okay, we, there's a motion and a second, why don't we just have a roll call? Did you want to say anything else, Mr. Plori? Okay.
Mr. Tofano, would you kindly repeat the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that a full investigation be conducted in order to find out if any board members or board member interfered with the putting forth of Ms. Chanley's contract.
Please.
Okay. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
Upstate.
Ms. Erzky?
I'm going to go with a no for other, no other reason than it sounds ridiculous.
I don't understand it.
But in no way, shape, or form does that implicate me. I'm just thinking, no.
We're voting for a discussion.
No.
Point of order.
Ms. Siegel?
No.
Ms. Gerby?
Absolutely yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Madam President?
No.
Yays have it with six motion passes.
We'll have to decide at a later date how to proceed. We'll talk about that in another closed session. We don't have it on the agenda tonight, so we'll have to do that. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
As a point of clarity, then there will be another motion coming, presumably to find out how the investigation's done.
Well, I don't think we could, I don't think we could put it on tonight's closed session agenda at this point, can we? It was not advertised as such. Let him answer.
I don't know. No.
We cannot put it on tonight.
You can add it by two-thirds vote.
Okay, so let's try that.
So it would be a motion to amend Agenda Item 17.
Okay, let's do that.
I'd like to make that motion, please. To add item number.
Okay.
For the discussion of this agenda item.
Okay, so did we hear that?
Yeah.
A motion to amend Agenda Item 17, which is the closed session resolution, where to add that discussion to the three we already have on the agenda. We need a two-thirds vote. Did we have a first and a second? Karen and then Chrissy?
Ms. Gerby.
Ms. Gerby? Okay, roll call, I don't think we need a discussion on that.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Mr. Erzky?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
I'm still going to say no. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Okay. Motion passes, and that means we have?
Madam President?
Yes, we're not going to discuss it, but what's the question?
We're still on other business.
Oh, other business, I'm sorry, Mr. Plori.
Yeah.
I'm watching the clock, everybody wanted to go.
No, I'll try to make this quick, and obviously, I was deferred earlier. I have said this several times at the board meetings, that the single most important thing that the board members are duty is to make sure that we select the most qualified districts superintendent, and the process of doing that is clearly defined. Madam President, if there's one thing I learned about, from you in the last 12 to 15 years, is your passion for transparency and following the process. I'm afraid there is neither transparency nor the process was followed during the selection that was recently made. Let me please, allow me to explain. This doesn't mean I spoke to anyone else, but I want to bring it to the board, more importantly, I want to bring it to the people of Monroe Township. We received the retirement of Dr. Alwicke on July 19th. We immediately discussed posting both the acting superintendent as well as the permanent superintendent positions immediately, and we posted them within a week or so. We received well over a dozen resumes by August 16th, that's a deadline that we set up. At the August 18th meeting, we sat at the midnight, gone through some of the resumes, each and every one of us picked, and said, these are the people that we should be interviewing. All of a sudden, on September 14th, the Chair of the Personnel Committee unanimously decided that we're going to conduct interviews of two internal candidates only. And on September 15th, we conducted interviews of the two internal candidates at 12:15 in the morning, and we decided and concluded them at 1:20 in the morning. You, Madam President, made a suggestion that we sleep on this, come back the next day, or the day after, and vote on this and deliberate this. One board member insisted that we voted it that day itself, and that board member got their wish, and we immediately went to the public and approved it. A district of size of Monroe needs and deserves an in-depth vetting process for the right candidate. Dr. Chanley, this is no reflection on you.
Mrs. Chanley?
I keep saying that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
That was not intentional, by the way, that is absolutely not intentional. All I want is best for the district kids. I'm not going to be on this board. So why am I bringing it up after everything is done? Because very similar to Dr. Alwicke leaving, giving us 90 days, now you have 90 days, or the board has 90 days to come up with the superintendent unless they want to extend your contract further. I think we need to vet this process, be transparent, be open, and do the right thing because this school district deserves it, rather than the midnight deals, cronyism, and some of the stuff that goes on. I want the public to come to these meetings and see what's going on here, not just voting and sending people based on the large signs that are put up there, but what actually is happening and who's running this board. Thank you very much.
Other board business.
New business, Mr. Chiarelli?
Yes, I have some other board business. And I wish Mr. Plori was as animated and concerned about cronyism and backdoor deals and deals with the mayor and everything else with the prior administrations that were here. It just seems that he's awakened suddenly when he's not going to be on the board anymore. So thank you, though, for finally seeing the light. I would like to just thank, I would like to just congratulate, but I'm saying, Gazala Bora, Katie Fabiano, and Kate Ratner on their win. So I think that was awesome. They're going to be fantastic board members, and I think they have a lot to offer as parents and as the next generation that's coming up, so I look forward to working with them. I just, I'm just going to say one more thing because I think what happened with Ms. Chanley and the county superintendent was disgusting. I am privy to some of the things and conversations that went on where this man had conversations with various members of the public, and all I'm going to say is, the various stories and the slandering and the things.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm going to cut this.
Excuse me, Mr. Plori, if you could sit here and give away closed session information like you just did, I think I could say this.
I did not.
Yes, you did.
I did not.
You just gave away what happened in closed session, and that's a major violation, and I'm going to file on you tonight. But besides that, I'm done, I just want to thank them, and I want to.
Yes, and let me interrupt you.
It's a welcome change.
And I want to apologize for not identifying the board members newly elected. I do apologize. We have our three elected board members, and we welcome you, and we will look forward to seeing you on. Thank you. Chris, let's keep it new business, please.
Well, I would like to address what was said because it is misrepresented.
Okay, but it's not, but it's not new business. Let's, let's.
Well, no, Michelle, I have a right to say what I have to say because we, it is new business because we are being accused by certain member of the board of not following a procedure. The procedure was set forward. We advertised it like we said we would, we sat through, and we never said, we never picked people we were going to interview on August 18th. We talked about the need to have somebody in-house, and then it was a discussion amongst the Personnel Committee because we needed to make a decision. It was not like the past where it was not advertised out. You want to talk about the past, about transparency?
Let, Chris, it's, I, I want you.
No, Michelle, I am sick and tired of reading stuff on social media and things being said and portrayed that just are not true. It was a very transparent, what we did.
These are facts.
It is not a fact.
These are facts.
It is not a fact. They are not facts.
We're done. We're done with that discussion. Thank you. Everyone is, we will proceed with Mr. Tofano's resolution, and we'll get more clarification.
Can I just bring up one other, one of the nice, one of the nice part of board business, just like, very different, very peaceful, very big question? So I hear there's a talk of a winter formal for the high school. So I just wanted to support that, want to find out if it's possible. I know the students would love it. Again, changing topic, but that's my other board business for tonight. I'd love to see a winter formal for the high school.
Okay, I am going to open the public forum. Again, please, and you can talk about things that are not necessarily on the agenda, but we hope to, that you would be prudent and recognize the time of the evening and name, phone, name, address, and four minutes. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Pradeep Malam, 48th place. So I stopped with my previous talk about comprehensive financial report. So I am expecting like at least some board member will acknowledge that we need to have whatever the numbers that are not public so far, we'll bring it to another board business and make some resolution. I don't see it, and I don't understand like whether you guys care or not about these numbers to come public or not. Okay? Because any running total, our budget is a zero-based budget, because I've been heard this multiple times, this long ledger, this wide ledger, I have every pencil where it goes and everything, but every time I ask a question, the numbers are, oh, it's not on top of my, oh, no, I didn't prepare for that. But even those numbers are not even published or answered later point of time. And our zero-based budget doesn't contain any running totals or anything that we owed or anything that will come, or year after year, or somewhere we invoiced it in the June that will come in July or August, that is also not part of that. Okay? The comprehensive means it has to be completely thoroughly open book for any company, and we are not a for-profit company. This is a public entity, and it has to be much more transparent. Because two BS are adjusted, or two BS are agreed upon that this number cannot go on comprehensive report, and auditor says this need not to be on that one, but as a board, as a people representative, what you want to do. As a people, I'm asking, what is this number? In almost every year at the budget, at the end of the budget or end of audit, I keep on asking this question, and then it will take at least one month, even a Oprah document, even if I Oprah it, it will not contain on that one because there is no place to put it. They don't contain this document. This is a black one. So to the, to the other point, I respectfully ask the board secretary, board president, and the Jamesburg representative himself that it has to be, draw a boundary line on which topics he can talk and he can vote. This has been ridiculously interfering into the Monroe Township School District business, apart from high school, apart from he is entitled to do it. Okay? In the last meeting, he talks about the retiring of middle school wrestling coaches. He doesn't have any business with the middle school wrestling coaches. He doesn't have any business with the middle school referendum, middle school enhancements or improvements that we are doing. Thank you.
Give me this. Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public? Yes.
Michael Holeski, 50, Mayberry Avenue, here in Monroe Township. Kind of hard to stomach some of what I just heard, but do have two important points. I guess, one, I know Prakash, of course, is not here tonight, and I know Prakash on occasion, and maybe a few other people in the public have talked about issues regarding the enrollment projections that were provided by the demographic outfit. So I don't have the numbers myself, I know he can speak to it a lot more in detail, but please give some consideration to sending out maybe a request for qualifications, look for some other demographic companies. Hopefully, maybe there's a better one that maybe has got some more experience in dealing with these demographic projections, because I know there's a lot of concern that he spoke to, and I think a few other people spoke to. And the other item, I just wanted to mention really quick here, but very important. So glad to see Mrs. Chanley here now as our acting superintendent. And one thing I just want to leave you with, please give some consideration towards putting a roadmap together. I know some people have talked about a timeline, and it dawned on me, roadmap is probably a better way to explain it. A roadmap that shows us from today to the point of actually putting a referendum together. Step by step, that roadmap, so that you folks can make sure you all agree on those steps that are going to be taken in what order. And also, at some point in time, people are going to be asking some pretty important questions. Where are we? You know, it's kind of sad that it went on about nine or 10 months, and I know a lot of people have kind of pointed the finger at the Board of Education, but the right place, of course, was pointing it back at, sad to say, I guess, the former superintendent. But I'm glad we have somebody now that looks like it's going to maybe push this effort forward. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, just by voice vote, I'd like a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Okay, next order of business is our closed session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject: harassment, intimidation, and bullying; board discussion on permanent superintendent of schools position and review of applications. This third one, acting superintendent contract consideration, was a, that doesn't belong there, we've already addressed that at the first closed session. And then finally, the investigation resolution that was just passed. Okay? May I have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or anything? Okay, let's go. We're going to do the HIB. I hope it's, yeah, it's going to be at least an hour, folks, if not an hour and a half. I know it's another late night. Okay, we are back in session. The time is 12:04, seems to me. We have a few things in, we have two resolutions, I believe, we need to read. Three. Three. Okay. Do you want to?
So pursuant to the motion we made at the meeting about having investigation, we took to closed session to talk about how the investigation was going to occur. I now want to make a motion to appoint Porseo Compliance Services LLC to conduct the investigation with a cap of the cost of, at $10,000.
Second. Moved by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Gerby. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarelli?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Oh, I don't know why, I thought it was next.
He's tired.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
And Mr. Erzky?
Yes. Yes.
I'm going to stay consistent, so I'm saying no. Okay? That passes?
Yes.
I have another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the advertisement for the position of permanent superintendent of the schools' systems, so we can take an opportunity to evaluate the applications we already have.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Everybody's clear about why that's happening? We have had the, we have had an open advertisement for permanent superintendent since August. We have had more than 20, close to probably 35, applications. We have had more than 20, close to probably 35, applications, and we think that we need to go through those efficiently before we can, you know, even consider anything else. So, that's the point of that. Mr. Plori?
Yeah, Madam President, given the fact that December is my last meeting as a board member, I would like to abstain in this particular motion, because I think it should be the next year board's prerogative in terms of the rules and regulations they want to follow, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Shall we have a roll call, please? If everybody's finished, I'm sorry.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Plori abstains. Ms. Siegel?
I'm going to abstain also.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
I abstain.
And Mr. Rotsky?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I believe we have one more resolution.
Yeah, do it.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a resolution or motion to, make a resolution, to establish an ad hoc committee that would be established by the president to review the applications that we've received so far for a permanent superintendent and have them vetted and scored, whatever process they want to use within that committee, and identifying whatever number of applicants they wish to present to the board for interviews, so that smaller group will kind of go through all the resumes and then come back so that we can get interviews going.
Can we shorten that, Josh, that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to give, do you mind?
Yeah, no, please.
Let's give us wording for that.
Okay. Motion to establish an ad hoc committee to review current applications, applicants, and application packets for.
Permanent superintendent.
Permanent superintendent candidates received to date, comma, such committee to comprise five members.
Three to five.
Three to five members of the board to be determined at the discretion of the board president.
I think so. Well, I'm going to give it to Nancy when I'm done.
I second it.
First line, Ms. Beerman, second, Mr. Chiarella. Any questions? Okay, let's have a vote. Ready?
Well, is it three or is it five? I thought we said it was five.
Three to five. Three to five. It's, that decision hasn't been made yet.
Your discretion.
I thought we decided five. Okay, I thought we decided five.
The resolution is as such. It's.
Okay, Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky?
Yes.
And Ms. Arminio?
Yes. Okay. Next order of business is public forum. If anyone wishes to speak on the three resolutions that we just brought forward, seeing none, I have this one. On a voice vote, shall we close the public forum, seeing no one in attendance?
Yes.
Okay. All right then. The next scheduled board meeting will be December 15th, 2021, and that will be at 7 o'clock. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you all once again for your tolerance and time spent here with us. It was a blast.
Thank you.